Good morning, everybody. It's July 30th, 2019, our last meeting. I still hear my call waiting in the Story County Board of Supervisors.
And I would ask you, if you would care to, to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's good to see so many people here this morning. The first order of business now is the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to move the -- or to adopt the agenda.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion, Olson. Second. Hiddens, any discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approve the agenda. Next, we have public comment number one. Comment to publicly address topics on today's agenda, but we have somebody who wanted to speak, and I told him, on another matter, I told him he could go ahead and speak now briefly. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm here to speak as a member of We the People against the lack of stability occurring within the walls of this building. As a resident and taxpayer of Story County, in my experiences, the employees and the department heads of this county have been excellent representatives of our county. I routinely interact with a number of employees as a resident. I'd like to speak just briefly about the character of County Attorney Jessica Reynolds. So Jessica Reynolds is a sound prosecutor and well-respected in our state. She's always taken the time to meet and provide advice on legal matters. She has a pleasant demeanor, and she's had years of service to our county. She is unquestionable in her pursuit for justice and integrity, and she speaks up for victims of crime and abuse. During a recent homicide case in Nevada, it was Jessica Reynolds at the office directing the legal team at 11 o'clock at night. I'd also like to speak to the character of our sheriff, Paul Fitzgerald. Sheriff Fitzgerald is nationally and internationally respected as a law enforcement leader among the justice agencies. He is very well-known and has the credibility in favor from the FBI, the International Police Interpol. He is one of the leads and well-respected with the National Sheriffs and Deputies Association, countless years, if not decades, of service to our county. He's the only sheriff I know who has sent employees to be part of an international task force to end human trafficking. He's developed lead protocols and standards for missing and abducted children. In fact, we have a mutual friend in Boston that is in charge of the alarm and communications industry, who was actually quite shocked that a supervisor would take a swipe at our sheriff. In the modern-day workplace, leadership is won by actions and nobility. Respect is not garnered by fear, intimidation, or bullying. When employees come to work in fear from unpredictable leadership, not only are they stressed, but they underperform. You're also opening this county and you personally to lawsuits, and as a taxpayer, that's not acceptable. Shouting matches should never be the way of business in our county buildings. In other occupations, that behavior would warrant termination. I'm not calling to question an honest mistake, atone for my apology, and a commitment to do better. I'm calling out a pattern and practice of offensive behaviors. Since January 2017, Supervisor Olson has made a number of errors in managing the affairs of this county: directing employees to take action outside the board's purview, subjecting the county to potential lawsuits, and engaging in intimidation practices against employees, and using the office to further personal agenda or opinion; subjecting department heads to non-mandatory meetings where clear political motivation is present as bad policy and a waste of taxpayer money; undoing a federal agreement based on lack of knowledge, experience, and expertise as dangerous policymaking; let the department heads manage their duties, and they are the most qualified experts in the room. It's my perception, the position of supervisor is one absent of an ax to grind and more of leading the direction of the county as a whole. I'm opposed to supervisors who take on personal agendas ahead of the county's agenda. Quite frankly, politics and personal opinion should not be the basis for decision-making. I felt so compelled to speak out that this continued behavior should not go unchecked. I would recommend the board issue a public admonishment and also a public apology to alleviate the hostility shown towards my friends, Jessica Reynolds and Paul Fitzgerald. I would also recommend the board consider a climate survey of all county employees to determine how widespread this behavior is impacting our working employees. I know of employees who have left the county for other employment opportunities. I do not want employees afraid to do their jobs, walking on eggshells, or leaving for other employment. I do not want department heads afraid to make a decision in the best interests of the county and the residents for fear their budget will be negatively impacted if they disagree with any particular member of the board. I thank you for allowing me the time to exercise my rights as a citizen and defend the character of my friends. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I would -- are there any other public comments at this time? If not, I will close the public comments session, and we will move on to the next order of business. And we have a proclamation that we are going to, I assume that we're going to pass this morning or going to approve of, and I would like to read it. But first, I would like to say that I've read the story recently in the Ames Tribune regarding Ralph Bennett, and we all know that when we talk about veterans, a lot of times, we talk about sacrifices, we talk about the ultimate sacrifice. Something we don't think of as often are the sacrifices of the families, and not just the immediate sacrifice, but the continuing sacrifice and the continuing meaning of a loss of life to a family. And I think that there's been, I think that the Bennett family, the McMillan, the Mullen family, that you remember, Shar, your family has, over the decades, kept the memory alive of your uncle, and I am just honored to be able to read this proclamation. So I will read it, and then we'll -- okay. It's proclamation of U.S. Army Corporal Ralph L. Bennett coming home day, which will be August 3rd, 2019. Whereas of the 16 million Americans who served in World War II, more than 400,000 died during war, and 72,708 service members are still accounted, unaccounted for from World War I, with approximately 26,000 assessed as possibly recoverable. And whereas the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency announced that U.S. Army Corporal Ralph L. Bennett, 22 of Ames, Iowa, killed during World War II, was positively identified and accounted for on April 29th, 2019. And whereas Corporal Ralph L. Bennett entered the U.S. Army on November 10, 1942, serving at Headquarters Company 209th Engineer Combat Battalion, and was killed on June 13th, 1944. Whereas Colonel Bennett's battalion fought in the siege of Jenkin, Burma, after successfully taking the airfield west of there from Japanese control. And whereas on August 1, 2019, Corporal Ralph L. Bennett will arrive on a commercial airline to Des Moines International Airport, where the U.S. Army detail will receive him there along with his family. Once received on the tarmac, the Patriotic Motorcycle Group will escort him to the funeral home in Ames, Iowa. And whereas on August 3rd, 2019, the Patriotic Motorcycle Group will escort Corporal Ralph L. Bennett from the funeral home to the Ames Municipal Cemetery. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim August 3rd, 2019, as Corporal Ralph L. Bennett coming home day. It is with great honor, respect, and dignity, we will have Corporal Ralph L. Bennett laid to rest in the Ames Municipal Cemetery, Ames, Iowa, on August 3rd, 2019, 75 years after his heroic act. I would entertain a motion adopting the proclamation.
I that we adopt the proclamation recognizing Ralph L. Bennett coming home day.
I would second that.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Excuse me. Okay, the proclamation is adopted, and Shar, Monso, would you like to come up and have a picture with the supervisors? And then, after that, I'm going to ask that all the veterans in the audience who would like to also join us for a second picture, would that be all right?
We'll move on, then. We have a presentation by an urban renewal area applicant, the City of Zering. Mayor?
Good morning.
Morning. Good morning.
Good to see you.
I'm here this week to represent the city since I was absent last week. I had a slight mishap on Monday afternoon, and I was unable to attend last Tuesday. So I'm glad to say that things are going well, and I'll be fine, but I'm too old to fly through the air and hit the side of a crick bank.
How did you do that?
So I got thrown off a tractor. So it was, and this totally slipped my mind and all that.
I understand. Well, this too, and we're glad you're here today.
So honestly, I happened to be, when we did hear, get a text from, so I told Karen to apologize. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Thank you. And our application is for a project we wanted to do in Zering about five years ago. A gentleman that owned a piece of ground just south of the creek there in Zering, it was a bare piece of ground that we had been maintaining and mowing, told us that he would give us that piece of ground if we would make it a park. And we already had a park, there was some discussion, but we decided that we would do that, and we have, and since then, we have put up some playground equipment. We had volunteers a couple of years ago to put up a shelter house there, and we got that put up. And then it'd be, with the increased use, we didn't know how much it would be used, but we found that it was very handy for the people that lived in the south part of Zering. Their kids did not have to walk across Main Street, Center Street, to get to the park. So it immediately got a lot of use. Now, it was brought to us, could we possibly maybe put a restroom facility there at the park? We've maintained, the last two years, we've had Kaibos brought in in the spring, and we maintain those, the city has, for the use of the people there through the summer, and then we remove them in the fall. So we put together a project, possibly, to next spring, build a restroom. And as you see in our app, we have two different, at the time, we proposed two different plans for a restroom. Since then, I really think the smaller, just the single plan with the two single unisex restrooms, I think that would be sufficient for that park. And that's kind of the way the council's leaning now, but we filled out the application back in June to apply, hopefully, for some money from the county, a grant process, to help the cost. Estimated projected cost to start with was $25,000. I think possibly it could get done for less than that with some volunteer help, but we, you know, you're kind of taking a shot in the dark at what cost it'll be to get the sewer and water run from the street into the restroom facility, and that probably will be one of the bigger expenses. So that was our proposal, and we hope that the supervisors will consider this as one of the applications to possibly award us some grant money for this project.
Were you asking, and I didn't bring that file today, I'm sorry, were you asking for the full 25, or was the city going?
No. No. What we really thought is if the county, you know, we talked about what to ask for, and it's a 20, at least a 25% match, and we realized that. So we thought, at the most, we would ask for would be 15.
15, okay.
For that project.
Does anybody else have questions?
No, I just, I couldn't recall the exact amount either. So just to be fair, because I've asked when we had the presentations last week about relationship to economic development here, so given that Zering Days was last week?
Last weekend.
Yes, and I'm sorry I missed it. I threw my back out already, I've come. So, but want to talk a little bit about how that park gets used on something like Zering Days?
Well, it was very successful last weekend again. We had a very good crowd in town, and we think it'll, it just enhances more the economic development in Zering. Like I said, this started, this started out a piece of ground, and we didn't even know we wanted it for sure. And we made it a park, and with what we have going on, and I'm sure you supervisors are aware, several of the projects that we have going on in Zering right now. So we just, we just think this would be another step that would help. And the park is, like I said, it has surprised us with the amount of use that it gets. We have apartments right across the street from this park, and we noticed a lot of the residents of these apartments are over there, sitting on the bench, and spend time over there during the day. So it has turned into more than what we anticipated at the beginning.
And my, I guess my only question is, because I'm new, I didn't catch your name, so I know you're the mayor.
Martin Herr.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I'm fortunate enough to be the mayor of Zering at the present time.
There's a little history on that.
I guess I have no one to blame for that but myself.
Thank you.
Okay.
We understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your.
Thank you, ladies.
And glad you were able to make it.
I'll be fine.
Okay, good.
But we won't try it again.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, we move on. We have agency reports, we have none listed. Consideration of minutes, there are no minutes for us today. Consideration of personnel actions, I would entertain a motion for approval of personnel actions as listed.
I would move as presented.
I second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Consent agenda, if there's, and we didn't pull anything, so I would entertain a motion for approval of consent agenda.
I would so move that we approve as presented.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Public hearing items, we have none. We are down to additional items. Moving along. So it's discussion and consideration of additional funding to HERDA for the restoration, revision, and maintenance of services in Story County. Julia Castillo and Brooke Ramsey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I'm going to let Brooke start, since she put a lot of this together, so. I'm Brooke Ramsey with HERDA. Have a new supervisor, so I thought I should at least tell you which one of us is which.
Thank you.
So the first item in the letter that we submitted talks about Aging Resources of Central Iowa, and they're the local department of the area agency on aging. And we have a contract with them to provide transportation for seniors. This fiscal year, fiscal year '20, they did an across-the-board transportation reduction of 10%. So in looking at fiscal year '19, we received $36,900 from them, so of that, this year, we're only receiving $33,210. There's been several changes in HERDA's revenue streams over the last two years, and in considering a reduction of both state and federal funds already, and then in addition now to funding from Aging Resources, we had to make some changes with our operation. Our contract with Aging Resources does have three areas of focus, which is transportation to grocery shopping, medical appointments, and congregant meal sites. So one of the changes that we had to make was to reduce some type of service there, and that was to do service in between different communities on a donation basis. So we're still providing transportation for folks to get to grocery shopping, medical, and congregant meals on a donation, but we limit that to in-town. So for example, Nevada to Nevada, Ames to Ames. So we did look at how many trips were provided last year, and overall, for seniors 60-plus in Story County, it was a little over 15,000 rides. However, we only had $5,000 in donations, which turns into about .35 per each one of those rides. So we are also only allowed to recover up to 50% of our expenses from those dollars from Aging Resources, meaning that we have to have matched funding from other sources. We've historically, of course, been able to use the donations as part of that match. Unfortunately, we've never actually had the Aging Resources even come to the 50% level because our operating expenses for those 15,000 rides was almost $134,000 last year. So as you can see, the $36,900 wasn't even meeting that 50% threshold. That was something that we talked about at our most recent board meeting, and Supervisor Olson had requested that we put together some information and provide that, and then, of course, have some statistics to talk to you about today. Also, some of the changes that HERDA had to make was in services and frequency between Nevada and Ames. For several years, our service frequency between Ames and Nevada was about six times a day, so every couple of hours, Monday through Friday. And with the budget cuts we had to make, this was one of the options we looked at with utilization, and we had only about one to two people riding each time. About two years ago, we changed the frequency from six times a day to almost hourly, Monday through Friday, between 6:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. So with only one or two people riding each time, we looked at the cost of providing that service level and reduced it back to the previous six times per day. And we are still seeing that individuals are riding, they just would prefer to have that increased frequency, and that's something that the community had been quite vocal about leading up to the change two years ago, where we added frequency in. So if we were to go back to the consistent shuttles, where we have a driver dedicated to doing that all day long, Monday through Friday, 12 hours a day, the additional operating expenses is $78,000 a year for that service. So that doesn't include the existing six times that we're doing. That would be to make it basically double the service level by having it run 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., just about every hour.
So what is it costing you now, doing it six times a day?
That's $78,000.
So that's, that's just the figure doubled.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay.
So the customer service rep, which is somebody that is, somebody that answers the phones and either schedules the trips, and we do some cross-training with them, also We have not filled any vacant positions, again, due to budget cuts. And so one of the things that we were looking at is if we had a part-time person at $15,600, we could dedicate them strictly to Story County. One of the issues that we have with Story County is just logistically how Story County is set up. All of our other counties, the county seat is usually like in the middle of the county, and in Story County, it isn't, and so those.
Well, our county seat is, but just where all the services are.
All the services, yes. Where we're located, I shouldn't say much more where we're located. And so one of the things that we looked at doing is if we could get it funded, was to either have a full-time or a part-time person that was able to do the trip scheduling for Story County and the dispatching, and try to help us figure out if there's more efficient ways that we could actually operate in Story County, because it is also one of the highest costs of service that we do. And I think a lot of that is the county services themselves because of the distance that we have to drive to get to a lot of the places that we serve, and most of them are coming like from Zering into Ames, and so those are much longer distances than picking somebody up in Nevada to Ames or Ames to Ames. And so if we could, and we don't have enough staff right now to really like do more analysis of what that could be, does that look like we, you know, go to Zering, you know, twice a week on these specific days and have people schedule that? I mean, that's just, I'm throwing that out there, that's not something we've actually looked at, but if we have designated person that could do that and schedule the trips and that kind of thing. Second on that would be the marketing outreach. We had, we used to have a mobility coordinator that was funded 88% by the Iowa DOT. That funding went away, and then we had to eliminate that position because we weren't able to cover the cost of that person. If we chose to have somebody just in Story County that could do the outreach, that could do the marketing, say, marketing to the aging resource, the people that use aging resources, letting them know that this is the importance of donations, not just that it's a free service, because somehow, in the midst of this, it has gotten where people think that the aging resource rides are free, not on a donation basis, and they don't understand that. So it's the education component of doing that, being able to handle some of the marketing and social media, analyzing some of our data in Story County of where could we go, you know, educating other agencies on making sure that we're getting people on the correct funding sources and doing some of that type of stuff. And we put a couple of options where we could have somebody that operates more like a mobility person, or somebody that we could hire, like a part-time college person that maybe wants to go into, you know, some kind of human resource, and they could work that for us, and just getting out and educating people and doing more outreach on what it is. Because I don't think that people understand the true cost of a trip, and when we're charging them $2 or $4, they're pretty much thinking that's really covering it when the cost of trips here in Story County is over $20. So that other funding has to come from somewhere. So we've kind of started trying to launch a little campaign of this is like a co-pay like you would for insurance, that the $2 fare and the $4 fare is just your part of the co-pay on it, somebody else has to pay the remainder of that, trying to get it in a situation where people could actually understand that a little bit better. But there's a lot of education that needs to go into that, and we used our mobility person a lot for going out there and doing that, and we just don't have the staff to do that right now.
Julia, it seems like this would be a good time. Could you also explain about matching riders to various funding streams, like waivers, et cetera?
I'm going to let Brooke hit that, she's much more versed on it than I am.
So with public transportation, one thing as an industry that we've historically done really well is blending funding sources together, and Supervisor Olson touched on the waiver program. So we've had Medicaid riders, and there's various types of approvals for Medicaid transportation, but combining them with other riders like our contracted services such as Aging Resources, as well with the general public, and that helps us keep the cost low to the general public because we're, the more people you have riding together, the lower the cost is per person. So we've historically done a really good job of that. A couple of things, Medicaid, of course, we've talked before about the Medicaid changes and reduction of funding, so that kind of has been an inhibitor to the process of blending those funding streams. Additionally, something Julia just kind of touched on was the, finding the appropriate funding sources for individuals. So we contract with Cyriide for their pair transit program, the Dialyide program, and we do have individuals in Ames that we've identified that would qualify, so I've been trying to sneak in a little bit of outreach in between my various other responsibilities to work with those individuals, and in some cases, institutions that can, that do business with them as well, to help them fill out those applications so we can get them on the appropriate funding source, which will help alleviate some of those other dollars for our other customers.
There was another case where we found out that some people were riding under the aging resource on a donation basis to go to and from dialysis, when they actually qualified for being on elderly waivers, which is a different source of funding that pays at a higher rate to better cover the cost of that. And so we're trying to do some more education with the agencies that, like the dialysis clinics, like could you identify people and where they're, what the appropriate funding source is for them to be riding onto? And I think it's more if we just. And I think it's more we just all need to understand that we're in this together, and we have to educate each other on our processes so that everybody understands that they need to get the money, that the people need to be on the sources so that they're covered under the right funding source, so.
That's nice. Are you finished, or?
I know there's one more on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The notification module is the technology similar to your doctor's appointment where it, our software looks at what trips are scheduled for tomorrow and the afternoon before. It can send either a phone call or email reminder to the individual and list their trips, and it gives them an opportunity to cancel those rides. So, it's a way of reminding people, we have you scheduled tomorrow to go to the doctor, we have you scheduled tomorrow to go to school, wherever your transportation is to. That service is provided as a subscription through a third party, and our portion of that cost just for Story County is a little over $2,000 a year for the subscription fee. So, that was another item that we included in here for consideration.
Let me ask, is that an existing service?
Yes, and so it has an ongoing...
How is it funded already?
We purchased the licensing for it, but we've had to pay out of our operating revenue for the ongoing subscription. So, just like your cell phone has a monthly fee, we have an annual fee for this service.
So, you're not saying that the money you were utilizing, a specific source that you were utilizing for this was cut? Okay, thank you. That's what I didn't understand, is whether that was a reduction you were trying to ask. Okay.
You're hoping, but that is one service that we really don't want to cut because it really helps us to, people forget, depending on how far in advance they scheduled the trip, and people do have memory issues, and there's other things that go into that. And so, it's a really great reminder of letting people know, because going to somebody's home and them not being there, but they forgot to cancel or they decided that day is considered a no-show, and it's really expensive, because that's just a trick we've made where we have no money to fund it because it was an unnecessary trip. So, we put it on there, but right now, it does not have the, we're not looking at doing it.
Okay, thank you. Normally, I turn to the other supervisors and ask if they have questions before I ask mine, but I have a few that I just want to ask first off, because there are things that I'm not understanding for sure about what's being proposed, and I want to make sure we have that on the table before we get to specific questions. The first I would ask is, I know that your board has been meeting because you have had some budget issues come up. Is this request being made from the Herta board? Is this something that the board has approved to come to a county and make the request? Or how did this come about? Is this part of, in other words, I know your board has a plan to address your budget shortfalls now. Is this a part of it that the board said, "Go come talk to the counties about money"?
That was brought up by one of our board members to have the other board members discuss what our counties could do for them, what the counties could do for Herta.
Okay.
Because we do receive county funding, we work in all, most all of our counties. Did the board directly say, "Go to Story County, talk to them about this"? No, this was something that I was requested to put together by one of our board members.
By Supervisor Olson? Okay, that's, that, yeah, I understand. And so, then my next question in that vein is, are you making requests of other funders, similar kind of requests?
We will be, we've talked about what we could do with going to the other counties, and this is our first one, I mean, our board meeting was just two weeks ago, so this is our first choice because Laura sort of jumped on it right away as, let's do this in Story County first.
And I have said on the record before that I think that for Story County, for any county that's part of the funding, I think that all the funders need to be aware, and there needs to be, you know, of what's being asked, so it's just not going to one county and say, "Well, we solved our problem." I think this is a multi-county venture.
It's definitely a multi-county, which is one of the reasons that we broke this into just Story County and what the expenses would be for just Story County, not asking any one county to pay for an entire amount. Like with Aging Resources, we have, we get different funding for each of our counties, and each of our counties was cut 10%, and that $36.90 was what we were cut just in Story County. And Nevada to Ames, again, Ames is a little bit different, we don't really have shuttles that run in any of our other communities. Boone to Ames and Ames to Nevada are the two shuttles, and then I think we have one from Knoxville to Pella, but it doesn't run anything like this, so that's kind of unique. The customer service rep, again, I wanted somebody that would really be able to target Story County, because it is the county that is most expensive to operate on, and we're trying to get a handle on why that is, and is it just the longer trips, and how can we most economically do this within a reasonable cost to bring those costs down?
Okay, and that kind of leads me to another question. It seemed like the Aging Resources and the Nevada to Ames were cuts on existing services. The other things appeared to be additional, so that things that aren't being done right now?
So, we are down two customer service reps that we have not replaced due to funding, but we never had one dedicated specifically to Story County. We do have a part-time dispatcher that is dedicated directly to Story County, but there's limitations there. Our marketing and outreach, we used to have a mobility coordinator position, and that was cut last year due to funding. We had a full-time person that was responsible at that time for five of our seven counties. And this one would not be, they would strictly be in Story County. And then, the notification module, we have existing, yes.
All right, is this request for one-time funds or ongoing funds?
One-time funds, well, I think they need to be one-time funds, because I think if we have some funding this year and we can get some of this stuff in place that can help us more efficiently operate and bring the costs down. We've already done a lot that we're going to see in this coming fiscal year 2020, where we have negotiated a lot of rate changes, so our revenue is going to be higher coming in, and now we're looking at, and we've done a lot of things to decrease our revenue, and so now the part that we're kind of missing is some of these individual things that are important to people. And I also think that outreach part of how we can get some more education out in the community and identifying, getting people on the right funding sources and things like that.
My final question is, have you made Asset aware of this? Because you know that your funding goes through Asset, normal funding in Story County, so have you made Asset aware of your requests that you were coming to us?
These requests?
Yes.
We have not.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had, I just wanted to, there were some kind of underlying questions, I just didn't understand the nature of the requests, and I wanted to make sure that I...
So, did we answer your questions?
Yes, yes, she did very well, thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions as well. First is just in general on the sheet here, so at the bottom of marketing and research, you reflect $20,000, but then when you flip it over, it has a $10,920. Can you, I mean, is it missing another heading, or is that another position?
There's an option. So, the marketing and outreach would have the marketing component with it at the $20,000, where the $10,900 would be, would not have any marketing component to it, it would just be outreach and more educating.
Got you, got you. Thank you for that clarification, I was just a little unclear on that. When you were talking about the ridership between Nevada and Ames and the changes, I know you'd like to do, or your proposals to have it for all day long. So, can you tell me, I know you were saying that you were only having one or two folks riding, was that with it all day long? What's, okay, so that's changed to, how many are you having ride between that 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM timeframe?
So, currently, it averages about four people per shuttle at the six times per day. It does depend on which shuttle, based on what they're coming to Ames to do. So, if they're coming for like a program servicer to attend some type of program, then we tend to see them there longer, and they tend to group more at that 6:30 time, and then again, at the very end of the day, similar to a work schedule.
Going to the customer service representative topic there, just going off if I heard you correctly, so you said you're down two customer service reps, but they weren't designated to Story County, but the dispatcher position, the part-time dispatcher position was, is that correct? So, it's going back to your original or supervisor, Merkin's question, your overall for Herta and narrowing this down to Story County, the customer service, is that like the total for the whole customer service program, or did you break that down between each county to say that would be the cost? Do you get what I'm saying? Is I'm just trying to figure out, is that a position that would cover the entire region, but it's put on here for Story County? At this, I'm just kind of unclear, since you said that they, you're down two, but they weren't designated to Story County?
The two that we're down are not, yeah, we're down two positions. We don't have any that are designated to a specific county, they're all, they all answer whatever calls come through. The only thing that we have different in Story County than any of our other ones is we do have a part-time dispatcher that dispatches the drivers.
Got you.
From Story County. So, we could, so there's a couple of options there. With a part-time trip scheduler working with the people that are calling in and doing those, and working with our part-time current dispatcher that we have, what I would like to see is that there be more efficiencies in how we actually schedule the trips in Story County so that we can bring the cost down.
Yeah, so this would be the first time that we would actually dedicate a person just for Story County in taking the customers' phone calls, responding to emails, and really being a customer service representative just for Story County.
But this one would be just for Story County regardless of whether it was full-time or part-time?
Correct.
Do you have enough calls coming from Story County to do a full-time position?
Yeah, I believe we do.
It's probably our, we probably get more calls from Story County residents than we do in any of our other counties, absolutely.
So, what's happening now without this position?
So, we've historically had everyone cross-trained so that they understood the service in the areas with, around our entire region, so when you call in, if somebody has the day off, or somebody is sick that day for whatever reason, there's that cross-training, and it's quickest with answering the phone. So, we would have to restructure the way we operate our call center environment a little bit to be able to dedicate this individual to Story County, but we have the capacity to do that.
So, the calls are getting answered now?
Mm-hmm.
It's just that the person isn't dedicated to Story County. Do you have a dedicated customer service rep for any other county?
We do not.
Okay. So, this would be pulling part of your service out and dedicating, okay. So, the calls are getting answered, is what I'm saying, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I guess I'm gonna go back. So, the customer service rep is not a new position, per se, you have that currently, but you're, the new position would be Story County only, is that correct? Okay, that helps me understand that. And so, the marketing and research, would that be, is that a new position, is, was that existing?
So, then, we used to have a mobility coordinator that was full-time, and she did marketing, outreach, education, trying to create new services. There was, I mean, it was a whole entire position that she worked with, and she worked within counties that were, like she would attend the transportation collaboration meetings and the United Way meetings, and so she did a lot of networking and building partnerships and things like that. When we lost that position, that came down to, all of those duties fell then within Broken Eye. And so, we now have to try to figure out how to do education and outreach and marketing, keep up our social media, and do that whole component part of it along with our other jobs that we try to do. And so, having somebody even within one county, because Story County is a county that is so involved, agencies are very involved, and they really want to take care and make sure that the services are provided for the residents of Story County. We don't see that necessarily in all of our other counties, the way that Story County does that, and so we were really involved in a lot of the things with Story County. There was a lot of events going on that we could do outreach with, you know, senior health fairs and just a bunch of stuff. And we're unable to keep up with that type of a schedule because we have so many other things within our jobs, and so our outreach has sort of gone down in our education component. And what we see with that is we used to, like, for example, we used to be able to go up to the hospitals and do a presentation called "The Life of a Trip," and it would show people what the life of a trip looked like from the time they called to the time that that person got on the bus, and if they should make a change in the middle, what that did, you know, how that affected everybody. So, we would do that with agencies so that they're, the people that worked at those agencies were very aware of understanding how they could best work with us. We haven't been able to do a presentation like that in well over a year, and we can tell by the calls and some of the issues that we're having, but some of that is a direct cause of us not being able to be out in the communities and doing that type of stuff.
And tying that back to the most appropriate funding source for the rider as well, we can tell that other agencies, whether it be the hospital staff or another human service agency, that as they've had turnover, that information hasn't been passed along, and so that's where we're starting to see that we have individuals riding that we know would actually be better suited on another funding source.
Could you, there's one program on here that wasn't listed because it's a hybrid between two counties, and just, could you just explain the Boone-Aim shuttle and why it's not on here?
Sure. Up until fiscal year 18, I believe, we had contracted with a nonprofit in Boone County to provide our services in Boone County on our behalf. And when that contract expired, Herta started operating that directly, and one of the things that we did in changing operations was evaluate the services between Boone and Ames. Excuse me. At that time, it had been approximately seven years, and our contractor from Boone County had not done a single hospital release for Mary Greeley. It was very difficult for the hospital, being city-owned and operated, and it was also very expensive for them because they were using private providers. Another thing that we looked at was access to like the DMAC offices and other services, there are certain doctors that are in each town on different days at different times, and it was identified that people wanted more frequency between Boone and Ames. So, at that time, two years ago, we implemented, just like we did with the Nevada to Ames shuttle, we implemented a Boone to Ames shuttle that ran one driver dedicated to it all day long with a service frequency approximately every hour. So, that we've also scaled back and we're only going, I believe, two, excuse me, two times a day, once in the morning and once in the afternoon, which it, you know, that does affect our college students that are wanting to take courses at both Iowa State and DMAC, as well as some of the individuals who have disabilities and need to get to the wound clinic in Boone. So, we've had some feedback about the frequency being a barrier for individuals in the community. As Laura said, that does cross county lines, and we know sometimes with our funders, they are interested in looking at within their own jurisdiction as a primary funding source.
I would make the assumption that, because I know the Asset meetings are going to be starting in the end of August, and with the budget then being proposed, or submitted by the end of September for the next fiscal year, so I'm assuming your board, along with yourself as the director, are looking at your finances or your budget for the next year to address the ask that would maybe also include some of these proposals for the next year? Just kind of throwing that out there as a...
Yeah, we will definitely be looking at, I usually do the Asset budget, look forward to it every single year. I usually do the Asset budget, and so, yes, these are definitely things that will be put in there. It's always difficult with Asset because we have to do it so far in advance, and... And I know we've had to come back before when we had, when we did the budget and then Medicaid kind of did their thing, and then we had to come back because our costs literally went up almost $10 a ride at one point and had to do some changes in that. But we will definitely be looking at additional things that we can add into the asset budget.
If I could just throw a comment in here too, because this, we are with asset the only of one of the seven counties that does a drawdown per service like assets. So there are only certain people you put under the asset dollars, correct? And that's part of this entire mix of who can do a waiver and how much time do you have to put in to get somebody on that waiver?
So do you have... With our, I'm sorry, with our asset funding right now, we break it down to City of Ames, Story County, and then we also have an Iowa City program that we break it down into. So there might be some additional things that we need to put in there for some smaller programs. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, no. Is that a question now? Just went, zoomed out in my head. It'll come back. It'll come back to me.
Are you assuming that the investments of the monies for a dedicated customer service representative and for marketing outreach solely for Story County will more than pay for themselves? Is that, is by next July 1?
Yes, absolutely. Because if we can't, when we lose that marketing and that outreach, especially that marketing and that outreach piece, is that, that person would then also be able to work with, whether it's a full-time or a part-time customer service rep, trip scheduler? Because I see those two positions working very closely together as well in identifying people and who do we need to target and how do we need to go out and outreach to them? And how can we even get more funding dollars? Where are those people to be identified that have dollars that we're not necessarily aware of so that we're not always coming to Story County and saying, you know, we need more money for this and we need more money for that? We have to find a way to also identify other funding dollars. One of the things that Herta has done, because we're a quasi-governmental agency, is we're also trying to get a 501(c)(3) agency also going so that we can apply for additional funding sources. So we're at the end of that process. We don't, we're just waiting for them to say yes. And then we can start also doing more grant writing and different things like that. But right now, we're just sort of stuck in this position of not having that as an option. But I think there's a lot of good opportunities for these positions that we could absolutely bring more revenue dollars in and cut expenses on the other end because we could operate more.
But, but given, according to your asset budget, $371,000 or about $372,000 is your Story County budget, is for Story County services. Am I correct? So you're talking about...
I'm sorry, I don't know whether I'm...
Okay, what I'm looking at is the asset budget, the ABF 7B, Laura has it. Under Asset Services and Service Code, it's showing all the revenues that you're dedicating to Story County services and the asset allocations included there and the expenses. What I'm seeing is about $372,000 budget for Story County. Can I, is that right? Is that how you would read that?
Can you tell me what page you're on?
251.
No, I was on, I was still on that, 85.
Okay. So it seems that you, the reason I bring that up is it seems to me when you're saying, yes, we think we can save that much by putting this investment, which is spending more money, we're gonna, we're gonna save enough money both to pay for these positions plus take care of, you know, some of our deficit. I'm thinking that's a huge lift, whether or not that's... Look at 251. Do you have that one with the orange cover on it?
Yeah.
Yep, I have it.
Okay, let's call it down. And I'm just trying to make sure that I'm looking at the right numbers and I'm making, my assumptions aren't incorrect. That's why I bring that up. I wanted to confirm.
At the time that this budget was done, those figures were probably right. I can tell you, I know the salary, the wages, the benefits, that's not because we had to lay off.
Okay, so you've already reduced...
We've already reduced a lot, yeah. We did quite a few layoffs. And we, and then as on the revenue side with program fees, we have probably, like, we've gotten increases with, let's see, I can't try to see what else is on here. Some of the, well, I know like with any of the Medicaid waivers, because there's a new Medicaid provider in there, we renegotiated our rates at a higher rate. So some of that stuff has changed in here.
Sure. Exactly. I'm saying, this is the kind of number we're looking at. And I understand that, that budgets change and they can change from week to week when you're in a situation where revenues are changing.
I just know on this one, it changed quite a bit because we got hit with that Medicaid stuff after that this budget was already kind of approved. And that's when we did our layoffs, was last year after this budget was already approved. So there are quite a few of the expenses that will, that I will, that they are not, these are not, I mean, they'll be quite a bit less.
They'll be lower. Okay, okay, thank you.
Because some of the people that we laid off were not just part-time people, they were some full-time.
Full-time, so you've got benefits as well as your salary costs and, yeah, okay.
Sorry, that took me a minute.
No, that's, that's okay. I mean, that's complicated, yeah, move you from one budget to move your mind to another budget that you have done a while ago. Yeah, I can understand. But no, that's good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before you take any action, may I, as a private citizen, comment a little bit on this particular...
Certainly, but let me see if the supervisors have any other questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have questions. I just have comments when we're at that point.
Supervisor Higgins?
I don't have questions. Well, I guess I do have one other question. So I know when you talked about that you write on a donation basis and what the average was, what, did you say what, about 35 cents a ride? So is there something out there to have like a, still say it's a donation? I mean, what are you looking at for some changes there or to say a minimum donation request is or to really support that? Or do you have to look at saying we are no longer, can only take donation basis because you're running at such a deficit for that?
So Aging Resources funding is the only funding that we're required to ask for a donation. So one of the things that we did just a month ago maybe, so we've put signs in all of our B pickles that says that this is asking what the, asking for a minimum donation. We can't deny anybody if they don't want to pay that donation. But what we did on this flyer that we put in the buses was explain what the true cost of a trip was, averaging at $17.50. And so we've put that on there, asking for this minimum donation to help go toward the cost of, the full cost of the trip and helping to do some education. We've also done some things on social media and things like that. And then one of the things that we plan to do is just get out and reach more people if we can to, because somewhere along the line, it has gotten that you can write free and people call it up the free program, why don't you write free on Herta? And it was never intended to be like that. And so we have to re-educate that $2 does make a big difference. It doesn't seem like it, but it really does make a difference.
But that's just for a certain population? That's not for everyone?
It's just for the, it's just for those over 60.
So it's down for them...
I guess, sorry, I guess, so does your sign on the buses clearly designate, is that for those over 60?
Correct. Gotcha.
And to write under this program, they have to fill out an intake form. So general public, people that write on Herta, they don't have to qualify, they can just get on and pay the fare and do it. For this particular program, there actually is an input form that they have to do. And so we've put that kind of all like on this flyer, but tried to make it still easy enough to read that people can identify.
Gotcha.
And we try to identify them too, because we have to report everybody over 60 to Aging Resources, whether they're, they write under the program or not.
Okay. And that donation basis is in Aging Resources contract. The only caveat to it is that we have to make it available for those three priorities, which is the grocery, medical, and congregant meals. So we don't have to allow them to write on donation basis if they're doing leisure activities, going to church, going to vote, things of that nature, or going between communities. That, thank you.
Thank you. Clarification, you said that it was two years ago you changed from your six times a day to hourly from Nevada to Ames. When did you make the change back to the six times a day?
It was in, yeah, June.
June?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we've received quite a bit of feedback. People would like it to be the hourly that's most convenient for them. That was part of the conversation that we were having with Supervisor Holson to putting this down. I'm not sure if she received as many phone calls about it as we have, but that usually tends to happen with the community members and our board members. If they're ever frustrated, they tend to contact, contact our board members.
Sure. So, so I think I heard you say that the people were still riding, that the ridership has not gone down, but people are very dissatisfied.
Correct.
Okay.
And with having, with being short-staffed with the customer service representative, the whole times have gone up and that's also been, you know, feedback that we've looked into, so.
Okay. Okay, well, you certainly shared a lot of information and there was a lot in your letter and there were also a lot of questions. And for somebody who hasn't been on your board, I particularly appreciate you taking the time to answer those questions. So are we, should we have Mr. Quinn talk before we discuss?
Mr. Quinn sat on the board before I did, so he's got some perspective here.
I try to be very brief. First call, Wayne.
Did you say you'll try to...
I'm trying to be very brief.
Your reputation precedes you.
Yes. I served on as a former board member on Herta for, throughout my 16 years of service to Story County. And this has always been a really a challenging endeavor. And when we really started expanding services in Story County and having a dispatch office here and looking at ways to increase ridership and expand different services, there were challenges as we went through that growth scenario. The thing that I want to reference here is we've always had a representative of supervisors serving on that board, but it's so much better to have them actually come to us and lay out what the needs are and what the challenges are rather than the individual supervisor, you know, discussing that, because we deal with that on a regular basis throughout our board meetings and things of this nature. And I also want to leave in mind, for the few individuals that utilize this service, this is their only means of being able to get to and from. It is very critical for them, and one of the challenges that Herta has and the community perception has been that some of these individuals have to have other care providers or other people do the scheduling and other things for them. They're not capable of doing this themselves. And sometimes the communications and things of this nature creates additional challenges. And so I also want to speak to when we had and they had the mobility coordinator position, I felt that that was a very crucial part of the community outreach and building partnerships and the collaborative things that were necessary. And when the DOT, as I just found heard, that, that cutting that position, I think that's again why if that is something that is determined to be vital again, that maybe even if it's done on a short-term basis so that we could evaluate it, might be something that the board might want to consider. But I do agree with Supervisor Higgins about, you know, the asset process and making sure that these requests are also brought forth. But I think it's also helpful for you all being relatively new to it to understand the magnitude of the challenges that the Herta services provide. And a couple of questions that I didn't hear mentioned here, and I don't know if there, doesn't have to be addressed here, but I'm just curious as to where they were or, we used to have the Iowa City trips that people would go. I hope that they're basically still able to go to Iowa City for medical needs. And then at one time, we were trying to do something between Ames and Story County, maybe talking about picking up people at the city hall and being able to transport back and forth, maybe to the Justice Center and other things for services. I don't know if we're able to even do some of those services at this particular time or not, but I just wanted to speak more or less in support of the challenges that they are presenting and hopefully that there can continue to be the collaboration as we've always had with the board in trying to address the needs of public transportation via Herta for the citizens of Story County. And just thank you for giving me the opportunity. And when I saw it on the agenda, I just felt like I wanted to be here to support, you know, the ongoing efforts. So thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah. Anybody else who wanted to speak?
Good morning. Carla Webb with Community Services, and I'm serving as the interim county asset staff member, so I'm here in that regard. I had shared the request from the board's agenda with the other asset funders, and they do have some additional questions. And I know one of those questions was if Herta is planning to make a request to the other asset funders at this time, or if the request would only be coming to Story County. So that's one of the questions.
Is it possible for you to answer that question?
So United Way and the City of Ames, you guys also receive funding through them.
Actually, we had not, we had not thought about that, actually. That doesn't mean that we couldn't think about that and actually make that request because I think that's a good place to also make a request.
If I could...
Especially with this, I mean, the amounts that they give us through the asset process have remained the same for quite a long time, so that might be something that's...
And if I could jump in here and remind my fellow supervisors to about how this conversation all started was with the Aging Resources, the reduction in the service. Is when I got the heads up and said, oh, okay, what's going on here? And so in response to the other funders or what the board and staff decide to do headed into the process for asset, what we're really, I feel, looking at here is that the reduction in services outside of Ames, okay? Is that's why I felt that as the county supervisor, the other counties who clearly don't have the asset process and have a little bit distribute, different distribution of population throughout the counties for the most part, and also the distances that are traveled, they're all looking at county reductions. I mean, you know, as it is what. So, so just to kind of give more perspective about why this wasn't looked at is going to all ask.
That actually brings up two more questions to me. And one of them is has services been reduced within Ames? And I mean, you could look at the Nevada to Ames being perhaps, but it probably impacts Nevada residents more because there's probably more people wanting to go from Nevada to Ames than Ames to Nevada. So I just kind of answered my own question there, I think. But have other services been reduced to other asset funders within Story County? I don't know how you'd say United Way, but say the City of Ames.
Sorry, it says, don't move the microphone, so I'll move my mic instead.
And Carla, if you have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
We did have layoffs which included drivers, so we are seeing that there are trip denials within the City of Ames just because of capacity levels.
Okay. The other thing, and again, it goes around to the other asset funders... The other thing, and again, it goes around to the other asset funders. We've, Story County has contributed an additional $97,725 this fiscal year towards the buses. So, we've already got that out of our FY '20 budget. Was there an ask of the other asset funders for money for the buses, or was that just Story County?
That was just Story County. The City of Ames does have CyRide, and so their capital purchases come through from CyRide being the, CyRide's the City of Ames Transit Agency. So, historically, the only capital assets that they have helped to provide funding for would be those under contract with the Dial Ride program, the pair transit.
But, and they do provide money for those particular asset purchases?
Through CyRide.
Through CyRide, and CyRide gives it to HERDA. Yeah, there is a money that flows.
Do you know how much money, then, for this last round of buses, they provided through CyRide?
The CyRide actually owns the vehicles through our contract. So, there's two that are in our fleet, and then when those are up for replacement, CyRide replaces those. But they're act, they're marked as HERDA vehicles. You wouldn't know the difference by looking at them, or the average person wouldn't notice. But they are actually owned, purchased and owned by CyRide, and then maintained and operated by HERDA.
Okay.
So, the buses that were just recently replaced, those were all HERDA's fleet, not CyRide's fleet.
Okay. How many buses does that, was that for Story County?
The replacements were seven.
Seven, thanks. Nice of you to remind her. Okay.
A little reminder.
Any other questions come up? Again, thank you.
I just wanted to know, Carla, did you have any additional comments from the region's perspective, or?
I don't have any comments from CICS's perspective. I think the, I don't know what other questions the other asset funders may have. They did want me just to convey that they do have some questions. Our next administrative team meeting is August 7th. So, at that time, we could review the presentation today and try and address questions. But the, I think the key question that had come out during our conversation was, was the plan to go to any of the other funders?
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I just did a quick add-up of all the asks here. You know, so you're looking at a total of about $157,330.
And I do want to say, we weren't asking for all of that.
No, I get that, but I'm just, I'm just saying that if I just add up all on here, that's, that's the total that I ran it. I ran, I came up with a different amount, but that's okay. Well, I don't have my calculator, so I'm just doing by hand.
To 152, depending on whether you're doing the customer service rep full or part-time.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to get clear that we weren't, these were just some options of things that we felt were necessary, or that would help us in getting over this hump that we're in, this stuff where we're at right now.
So, they're not prioritized, really? It's kind of a laundry list, rather than prioritization, or this is what?
I, I would say, as far as feedback from the ridership, I think they are prioritized as far as the riderships would go. The Aging Resources and having seniors who, you know, can't get between, let's say, Ziering and Ames on a donation basis, especially for those who are very low-income individuals. It's not a lot of individual people, but for them, as Wayne spoke to, it's a critical option for them.
Sure.
And then, of course, the Nevada to Ames frequency, that was something that even if we date back to the Task Force, the Story County and the City of Ames came together, the United Way came together to do on transportation, that was something that was identified as a huge need in the community to get folks more often between the two communities. And then, customer service representative, so kind of going from the top down. As far as community feedback goes, I think they are in a prioritized list.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess one question did come up for me now. Sorry, now that Julia's standing.
I'm gonna sit that down.
Okay. So, with the Nevada to Ames route, all right. What if we added, say, back in two routes, you know, two more trips, round trips per day? All right? That would give us, what, about 90 minutes in between each trip, or?
Well, the trips were scheduled on a first-come, first-served basis, so every day was a little bit different. That's why I say, on average, it was, the service frequency was approximately one hour. But the driver was dedicated only to doing that all day long. So, and we certainly could add in some more frequency and reduce the operating cost. We could look at doing that. I would just need to know a little bit more of when we were, the times of day and to identify how we could staff that, and how that would affect the operational cost.
The reason I asked that question is we focused on what has actually been lost or what is needed to, we feel, maximize revenues and reduce costs if, to look at with all these recent reductions. But as you know, probably, I don't know, Lisa, maybe I haven't mentioned it since you've joined the board, but there's still an ongoing effort to figure out how to integrate workforce transportation, which would pay for itself and actually cover more expenses. That's, that's the law, one of the long-term goals for the HERDA board and the strategic plan, is that we've got to convert and expand the type of usage. And the demand is out there. It's trying to figure out how to fit that demand in with the current one. But that would be as, has to pay for itself plus, okay? But it does weigh in here with the Nevada to Ames, because one of the requests for transportation, frequent transportation between Nevada and Ames has been, for a couple of years, on the economic development side, to get people to places like the printing shop here in town, printing, and get to a couple of the manufacturers. The expansion of Burke, that's come up in the discussion about Burke, about moving some people around. And so, that's, that's another factor I just want to put in there about why I'm asking about how many trips and, you know, where's, where do we do economy of scale and still be able to move some workforce around that we think there'll be a demand for?
May I?
Yes.
May I kind of try to put that in a nutshell?
Go for it.
Are you saying you would add, that you think adding a few more rides, maybe not going up to the hourly, but adding a few more rides from Nevada to Ames would pay for itself because of the workforce part of it?
I believe so.
And how would it pay for itself?
I believe so, and that would be once Burke is ready to go, is the, is the key one, okay?
And that would pay through the funding source being the riders?
Yes, correct. They'd have to pay. And there has been, by the way, a 15 cent per ride increase in general fares. That has been the whole, we did the whole HERDA region. But that's what I'm thinking, the looking at. So, when we come to the, almost the continuous, what Brooke answered, I believe, translates into, if you have a dedicated driver, then if we're going to add any trips, we might as well look at almost trying to add them all, because that driver is literally being paid and has to be on the schedule for that period of time.
When is, you mentioned Burke, when is that?
I'm gonna look in the back. Dustin, do you have any idea about Burke, when they're gonna start ramping up and hiring those extra people?
You know, I don't know the exact date off the top of my head, but I know it's in the near term, and there are quite a number of jobs. So, I would be thinking, yeah, before the end of this year. I think they're in that process, but then by the end of next year?
Yeah, I just, I heard October 20.
Yeah.
You heard October of this, this year, I'm serious?
Not, not this year.
No. They're gonna ramp. And I'll answer, because they're not on the mic, and since we need the audio here. So, from the back of the room, our economic development experts, both are contracted and in-house, all right, have indicated that the ramp up is for the first, and they were looking at hiring first about 40 to 50, and then, within this whole 200 to 250, within October of 2020. So, that would roll us over into a new fiscal year, which is, then we're not asked, that's not the ask.
So, that wouldn't really fit this fiscal year?
It probably would be for the 40 or 50. Now, there are other light priority print who's still trying to figure out how to get some employees moved.
Any further discussion?
No.
No further discussion? What is the board's pleasure?
Well, for me, I guess I'm just trying to figure out, just a little bit, I understand where Brooke and stuff said, thought these were in kind of priority areas. I'm still just trying to figure out, budgetary-wise, where we're at financially to as to what we can afford to do. The question coming about our ask going to the other funders as well, and are all things within this fiscal year? I mean, I just want to make sure, just kind of the last conversation here. Are we looking at this fiscal year or next fiscal year? Would we need to do a full amount potentially, if that's where we want to do? Do we need to do like a partial on the Ames to Nevada? I, I just have some, still some additional questions that are circling in my head here.
I guess, so now I said I had some comments about this, okay? Story County does provide some opportunities for HERDA, but it also provides some challenges that are not as, not done, as the staff pointed out. So, I don't know that necessarily the entire amount is, is probably appropriate, especially starting now. And, you know, originally, I was just gonna come with an ask to get Aging Resources, you know, to redone. And actually, I had about $6,500 in my head as the first ask for Aging Resources, plus paying for some additional rides for elderly, plus then doing some short marketing. Then as the discussion proceeded with staff, and also at our July 11th meeting of the HERDA board, as it became, obviously, actually certified, you know, when I had voted for the budget, et cetera, it became obvious that Story County was experiencing more reductions and impact on staff, more complaints than the other counties, the other six. And that has to do with who they're serving in the other counties, and also what the staff has already explained. And that's when I said, will you please put a whole list together about what has really been the impact on Story County, and what would it take to fix it, okay? The other counties, a comment was made to me, honestly, by one of the other supervisors about, yeah, well, we don't have all those wind turbines sitting there. And, and I had to explain to them about tax incremental financing, a real short one, okay? And, but we did have a little more money there, okay? And we do take some of that as general revenue. So, and then the other thing, my comment is, is, you know, the supervisor, Brooke, had asked that we bring it all at one time, just do one ask. Whereas, maybe it's appropriate to only do a partial funding at this point. I mean, you know, to say, okay, here's six months' worth. You work it out.
Let me clarify. I wasn't saying one ask to Story County. I was saying, I thought the HERDA board should have a plan for asks for all the funders, and that everybody would be able to understand what was being asked of everybody. That was what I was referring to.
Okay. There is one other supervisor who is very concerned about the Aging Resources portion for his county, and has done, basically, kind of just given some information to his fellow supervisors, they happen to be male, and the responses come back, they might want to look at that. The response from the other supervisors on the HERDA board in discussing this is it's going to have to be, the staff is gonna have to go and make a separate presentation. There is no unified effort right now.
We've been in contact with that county, and we are going down.
Okay. Okay.
If I could just say one thing, in looking at this list of things, I know that there's some things that would get a bigger bang for their buck, you know, so to say, even though I understand what Brooke is saying, and in the rider's point of view, these are the priorities, and I totally understand that. But I think if we could get funding to have a marketing and an outreach person that could get out in the community, I think some of these other things could find those other opportunities within the other agencies and other areas of where there's funding to help fund some of these other things, like the Nevada to Ames shuttle. I understand that people want it, but the six times a day right now is working. I mean, it might not be ideal, but we've made it work, right? Where we don't have anybody that's doing our outreach for us right now, so that puts us at a disadvantage for making more partnerships and getting out there and finding more funding and doing some of the things that we're being asked to do. So, I'm kind of looking at it a little bit different of, if I had to choose one thing that said this would be, give us the most bang for the buck, in my opinion, it would be another person that we could dedicate here in Story County to do some of this and get this data analyzed for us and be out in the community doing outreach and education.
And I was thinking, when you first talked about this, that you were talking, the education was in terms of efficiency, how people were using your service. Now, you're also talking about it as a way to find other sources of funds. So, it's really two-pronged. That's helpful.
I agree with former Supervisor Clinton that the loss of the mobility coordinator was a significant blow.
And what, do you know the reasoning why the DOT quit funding that position? I'm sorry.
It was federal dollars.
Just the federal dollars, they were no longer there. Gotcha. That's what I kind of thought, but I wasn't.
And there were, so there were eight mobility coordinators within the state. Herda was fortunate enough to have one of those, and I believe that are down to five now, because they're either still partially being funded or the agency has decided that they can make that a position. But there's just no funding left for it.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, we would have, there's no reason we would.
Right, 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 yeah. No, I assumed it was through the loss of funding through the DOT. I just wanted to make sure, make sure my assumption was correct.
Get the most bang for the buck, I would say that would be where we would actually get that, because they would be able to do more.
So, you would, and, and what I was hearing you say earlier, when we were talking about the asset process, and is this an ongoing or a one-time ask? I'm hearing you say, this is a one-time ask, it'd be a pilot. You would not come back to Story County and ask us to continue to fund that separately. If it worked for you, you would, you would, but you're gonna have to put it in your asset budget now without knowing if it's going to work, because it's due the end of September.
Right.
That's, that's an issue.
Although, if they had it before, they would have some statistics before.
They could.
Of the success.
But, but I see it as being a budget balancer.
Right.
Carla?
The, the activities are being, you know, what you're hoping for, is they're gonna be the budget balancer. You won't know that when you put in your asset budget request for '21.
And I.
And I know.
And the authority person may be in that 2020 budget that you guys were just looking at, because we, there's a, there's a, there's a space in there where we have to list out all the positions, and I'm not sure.
Her last day was August a year ago.
Here's, here's a sense I have. And I'm gonna go back to what Carla said. The Asset Administration Team is meeting on the 7th.
Correct.
And you brought one question that you knew people had, but there's likely to be other questions. I'm wondering, because our funding here does come through asset, whether it doesn't make sense, and we're honoring our process, if we wait until asset has had time to look at this, and then we come back and revisit?
There have been multiple times over the history of the Board of Supervisors where asset-funded, asset-funded agencies have come and made separate requests, multiple times. And so, while looking at the, how the asset fits into the process or the monies fit into asset going forward for the fiscal year '21, I think is appropriate, but I really don't know that holding, that looking at this for one-time funding for us out of the fiscal year '20 budget. We get anything out of the process of waiting until asset goes through its process. And maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying correctly, but I'm thinking the request is here today, and we look at, what do we want to do today with fiscal year '20 funds? And then, asset works with the agency to figure out what, what happens as they go into applying for next year.
No, I'm just talking about the, the, Cora said asset. No, I'm just talking about the, Carla said asset admin team is meeting August 7th, that's a week from now. Okay. So I'm just wondering if maybe they have other concerns, if other concerns might come up, or they might say, they might have some thoughts about it.
Carla, do you think based upon your initial conversation with the Asset Admin Team, that there's going to be concerns related to Story County just giving some money? It's going to be more related to the process, right? I mean, did the Asset Admin Team have to meet and talk when YSS came and asked for special money to do better security at one of their facilities? I think it was a $50,000 special ask.
Yeah, that's where I'm headed here.
I can't speak specifically to that YSS situation. I know in the past, when there have been, my understanding, when there have been individual requests to funders, sometimes this board has requested for that, to go back to the Asset Administrative Team to be processed, and to bring a recommendation back to the board. I believe that's happened at different times. You know, some of the questions that the funders had when we spoke yesterday, or the administrative team had when we spoke, have been answered through the presentation today. So I don't, I just don't know if there would be additional questions.
And I'm not interested in receiving an asset recommendation, an admin team, quite frankly. I think this is, at this point, a supervisor decision about using some money. I heard what Supervisor Hennings had said before about, do we have the money for that? You know, and that's, I'm still operating, looking now back at Lisa Markley here, about, we're looking at about 1.5 of really uncommitted, unassigned funds in my running document of my Excel sheet that, that I keep, just for members of the public, I keep an Excel sheet that just, when I hear about them, we may get a request for money, I just keep it running, who's, you know, bringing it up, whatever. And this one shows with what we already got out, and what I anticipate would be coming or whatever, even everything I've got on my list, including, it's also my own personal wish list, if you, I mean, you know, about like a housing pilot or whatever, still I come up with about $800,000 so far of that 1.5 million. And then I've got it sub-spread out.
Did you put the generator in there?
Yes, put the generator in. That's after I put the generator in, and $150,000. After I leave every meeting, and if we talk about it, it goes on this Excel sheet. It is not, it's not a formal document or anything, it's just me keeping track of where we always are sitting on that. So I, that's just kind of from a monetary thing there. I favor, since, you know, aging resources, I just, I think the replacing that money would be something I'd like to do, and I hear what you say about marketing and outreach, about addressing maybe some of these others. So that might be where I'd be looking at going if we're going to do the Nevada.
Thank you, Carla.
Thanks, Carla.
Lisa Markley, did you have anything you wanted to add? Since we're talking about budget, budget implications.
I got my hand out, Lisa.
That's everybody. The only thing I would, would point out is, as you've said, where are we at at the end of the year? We ended with 33% ending fund balance in the general fund. And yes, this does occur occasionally throughout the years. I've been in on a few times when asset-funded agencies have come to the board and asked for asks, one-time asks, whatever. Sometimes, sometimes it happens, and sometimes it doesn't. And having asset talk about it is a typical reaction that happens. Yeah, we ended the year at 33% in the general fund. So yeah, the numbers that Loris is talking about, as far as 1.5 that were unassigned, uncommitted, is fairly accurate. Now I am working on a budget amendment, as I told you I would be. And at this point in time, I'm at almost $2 million of expenses being put into the general fund. Some of those are big expenses that have been carried forward for conservation. So that's where we're at right now. Where I'm going to end with those numbers, I'm not positive, because I haven't got all my numbers to put together yet.
Because the revenue, or the source of those funds also carries forward also in some instances? Yeah.
Yes, hopefully.
Yeah, okay. Otherwise, yes, we have a problem.
When will you have the figures done?
Actually, it's going to be on the agenda for next week.
So next week, you'll be able to give us some clearer numbers?
Next week, I plan on giving you the proposed budget amendment that I want to send in the paper, so you can amend the budget at the end of August. So those numbers will be very, yes, those numbers will be as accurate as I have, as I have next week, or Thursday, when the amendment's due, for the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure to the board.
Well, hearing Supervisor Hennings, Lisa's concern about the budget, and I know when I first joined the board, it was of great concern, I need a little more extra time. So hearing, yeah, if you want to wait a week to see what the numbers are from Lisa Markley, I guess I have a comfort level with that, you know, part of the process. I just really think that this is a county issue, and then the staff can work with asset going forward for this. But it's pretty plain what's, clear what's happened here, you know?
So there's, I'm always one for getting more information. And we've gotten a lot of information today, we spent about an hour, I think, and I really appreciate it. Like I said, somebody who's not been on the HERDA Board, you know, I learned a lot. We do have two pieces of information I still think are, could be valuable for us. One is obviously seeing what our Assistant Auditor comes up with for the proposed budget amendment, and where we're at there. And I personally would still, since we have the time, be interested in what the Asset Administration Team, if they would come up with any concerns, I would certainly want to look at those, because I understand what you're saying, you know, county supervisors can certainly do something outside of the asset process. At the same time, it has implications for asset for next year. So I don't want to get too far away from the asset process and just getting the thoughts. I'm not saying, do they, I'm not saying it's their decision, it's our decision, but still they may come up with some information or some thought that we're not thinking about at this table today.
Well, the one comment on that is, the board meeting next week is on Tuesday, the 6th, and they don't meet till Wednesday, the 7th.
Right. And you're going to be gone following.
Right. The following one, so I would partake on the phone call for the next week's meeting or whatever, but I just wanted to clarify your schedule, when you're looking at additional information, you'd be looking at another.
And the marketing outreach position that has now been moved up the list here.
Okay.
That one is a longer term, can wait. I just, we've now been a month. I mean, I actually brought the aging resources concern about, we have now seniors who I'm worried who are not calling to take rides, they're canceling doctor's appointments, okay? Or they're, or they're not going to the grocery store, they're trying to, you know, get a neighbor or whatever. I'm concerned how long would carry that part of it out? So that's the one that's pressing me on a time.
So that's $3,690. And that would mean that she would no longer limit donations to in-town rides, she would have donation rides around the county again for that amount, does that do it?
That's what we lost in aging resource funding, which was part of why we did it, so why we had to make the cut, so, yeah.
So are you suggesting that we do that now, and we revisit the other asks, the other requests, to see later on?
That would be, I think, the ideal immediate resolution of the immediate problem, and I'm comfortable then with every, getting all the additional information. So with that, I'll make a motion?
Why don't you state the motion?
Okay. I move that we approve funding the $3,690 to HERDA specifically, to replace the reduced amount from the Aging Resources of Central Iowa program for elderly, to do doctor's appointments and meals and grocery shopping.
And I would second that motion.
Okay. We've had plenty of discussion, but is there any further discussion? Okay. If no further discussion, Alson.
Aye.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you. And that's, you know, that's not saying that we're not going to, you know, look at some other things, it's just a lot of, you know.
We totally agree. So thank you very much for that, that, we'll get that implemented.
Would it be acceptable that when we do meet in two weeks, or whatever, to rediscover this on the agenda, that they be able to be present by phone? In fact, Lisa, you'll be by phone too in two weeks, right?
Not, I will be by phone next week, but the following week.
We're not going to be able to do this until the 20th.
Till the 20th? Okay, all right. So would it be acceptable for them to come, so they don't have to travel back up?
Sure. I'm going to have no problem with that.
Because I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne Clint.
I hope we can give you a hug.
Oh, yeah.
Good to see you.
You too. How are you doing? Thank you.
Are you staying for the whole meeting?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
Moving on. LeAnn Harder.
Hi, LeAnn.
The 2019 Annual Review of the Cornerstone Capstone Plan and Implementation Matrix.
I know the question, it's not, not that at all.
Hey, we're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute break, is that okay with everybody?
That's good.
Okay. Call me back to order. And we have LeAnn Harder to talk about the C2C Plan.
Okay. Good afternoon, noon, I think.
It's, yeah, no, it's still good morning.
It's still good morning, LeAnn.
So what I am here this morning to do is go over an annual review for the C2C Plan, the Cornerstone Capstone Comprehensive Plan. I say annual review because we are actually past that substantially. This was intended to be before the board last fall, and then we had the watershed assessments come to the board. We delayed the annual review then to have that go through the process, and then had some change in membership of the board, and then some change in membership of the board. So now we're there where we can bring this forward. So annual review is, just want to set that stage for what, what it really is about. So the C2C Plan is a county's comprehensive plan, it was adopted in June 2016. We've done an annual review once. See, it actually has in the plan itself that staff comes before the board every year. So we're, like I said, just a little bit behind, but we'll get right back on schedule. Just basic, again, we adopted the plan in June 2016, staff came forward in November 2016 with the implementation matrix. That's really kind of the steps, the strategies to bring the plan to fruition. So 20-year plan through 2036, implementation matrix is more short-term. And then we started the implementation through the CIP, and then budgeting, and it is a living document that we see this evolving throughout all the aspects of Story County. So the annual review, when we do this, staff looks at three areas, review the goals and major recommendations and plan, we look at the implementation matrix and how we're making progress, and then just some general view of trends that are happening out there, necessary amendments. So this is a sheet that I won't go over through, but staff does these steps, goes through these steps, did this last fall, kind of did a little bit again to get ready for today, and we'll be hitting the ground running on this again shortly after, actually, we start this road all over again. We look at some general review questions, again, looking at trends, what the amendments have been, in interest of time, you've all seen the presentation, I don't need to read those. So the timeframes and the implementation matrix, as I said, are definitely shorter than the plan itself. They're annual or immediate, medium and long-term, so it goes out to 10 years. The plan is a 20-year plan, and then we also have the strategic plan that is adopted by the board that is through fiscal year 2023. So we really gain the sense that all these three things interrelate, along with our operating documents, like our capital improvements plan, you'll start to see some relationships as I go forward. Stop me with questions at any time, too, please, if I'm going too fast, too slow, whatever. So the plan, just for basic education, the plan is organized by different land use, economic prosperity, seven different chapters. But then, within each chapter, there are goal statements, and then there are objectives that help bring that goal, add more specificity to that goal, and then the strategies that have been identified through the public review process, everything that went into developing the CIP, or the C2C Plan. Then those strategies translate, in some cases, to implementation tasks on the implementation matrix. So you can see a general flow from the higher overarching goal statement to what steps we need to take to reach, achieve that goal. So delving right in, so I'm going to do two things. One, there was a copy of the entire plan placed on the county's website, I'm going to go through that and tell you where the changes are. They really are not too significant at all in the plan, other than adding length because of more documents. Today, my goal is to, one, have the board approve the modifications to plan, but then I'm going to come back again for the implementation matrix, so I can get some feedback today on that, and that will be in like three or four weeks. But as I'm going through, I'm telling you some proposed changes to the matrix as well.
And I just want to disagree with you as we go through this, I think there are some, it's more than, I think we'll be having some discussion on some of your proposed changes.
Okay. Any questions before I start? Are you clear on the process? Okay, Chapter 1, and the plan itself, there are no change, well, I need a backup. There are changes in the very beginning of the table contents because we are adding appendices. That was not incorporated into the draft that was before you. Same with the plan organization table as part of the, the Chapter 1, that's just, eventually I'll get that when we go to final publication. But adding the appendices of the watershed assessment and strategic planning will be added. And then, Chapter, so still, and then in Chapter 1, I do want to point out, one other thing I saw after I put this presentation together, we were able to, last fall, give the average median income, or average median price for housing in Story County excluding the city of Ames, and this is on page 1, 1.8, and it is showing $181,600, the increase, so including that. So we did not go through and update all the data that's in the plan, mainly because we know the census is happening next year. So the next two years, we'll start doing that, but that really jumped out at us because that was a substantial increase in the median household, median value of a house. Okay, then, going on. I don't have anything in Chapter 2, the public input. I will say, in the appendix on the surveys, the survey we did last year is incorporated, the survey findings, but no actual substantive changes to the plan itself for Chapter 2. Any questions? Going on then, in Chapter 3, the foundation, there are no changes in the plan itself, but in the implementation matrix, and then this, again, this would be a discussion in a couple weeks to actually have action by the board. We do recommend removing the local housing trust formation strategy task that's been formed, and then also determining the viability using health impact assessments.
Okay, so I instead, by, yeah, removing the formation, yes, but instead, I believe there needs to be a substitution there. We just don't, we just don't forget about mentioning the local housing trust, but instead, substitute something similar to increase county funding to local housing. But instead, substitute something similar to increase county funding to local housing trust to mirror most common model in other Iowa counties, that's something that we'll have to discuss. Actively encourage private and institution funding to the local housing trust. So I'm setting a new discussion item here about how that it's formed, how in fact does the county participate or moving forward as support, et cetera, that, okay?
To put increase funding into a plan rather than a budget, that's a budget decision. Two, I would not go for the term increase, I think we need to look at.
Okay, we could look at a different term.
Yeah.
Okay. Actively encourage private and institution funding to the local housing trust fund also. I mean, this is just what I threw in as I'm going through it, you know, and stuff. But I don't, I think that we continue to mention the housing trust fund and that we look at, in fact, about its significance, examine that. So I guess we need the words with language, so, okay.
I'm good with that, I'm just saying.
Okay.
And then, LeAnn, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I think just removing it, what, how we approached it, if the task has been done, we're recommending removing it. The point's well taken, we don't want to just be silent on the issue. So if I can get the language from you, I can work on building it in here as well.
All right.
And so that would be, that's on the plan, that's the matrix that would be coming forward in a few weeks.
Gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
The health impact assessments, could you explain that?
Yeah, and the strategy is, that was put in here, is determine the viability of using health impact assessments. That's been done, staff has done that analysis. We'll be coming back to the Board just to present, re-present what's been presented. But I don't know if you want me to delve into what health impact assessments are, but we all know what transportation impact assessments are, TIA's. And it's another type of analysis that would be built into the policymaking, making and decision-making in regards to development review cases, whatever it may be, looking at the impacts to the health of the community. That's what health impact assessment is, is a basic premise. So I spent some time studying them, have a presentation I've given, I think, to the Board last July. I know you were gone, but then I've gone to the Story County Quality of Life Lions Planning and zoning Commission and Board of Health.
I guess my question is just, maybe it's similar to what Charles Lawrence has said about the housing trust, is there a next, a next step?
I don't know if, I don't know if, without coming back to the Board.
Okay.
I think it falls under another part of it where we're talking about looking at land use regulations.
Okay.
Is where it would fall under.
I also, I had a note here, so 2020 is the Story County Quality of Life Assessment. Okay, so where does that fit in here? I mean, if you went and presented the health impact assessments and you did that to the Story County Quality of Life Assessment. So do we put in some kind of, on the implementation matrix here about the quality of life?
Okay.
So that's, that's, I just have a question there, I don't know how we would word that yet, so.
I can work on it and see how that would fit.
Okay.
The next one is an addition under EMP hyphen 1. And this is something that's been in the Planning and Development Work Program. It's just planning and developing a plan and potential location for construction demolition landfill. So being consistent with work program items, that originated from the plan itself that never actually made into the matrix. So making sure we have that circle completed.
Okay, so going back, okay, I'm looking at the matrix now as I was, had the three documents up on my computer, trying to go back and forth here to everyone. I'm thinking maybe it was in, wasn't it in there before?
No, it's on, if you look at the matrix, page 7, it's over on the left-hand side as a potential addition highlighted.
Got it, okay, sorry about that.
And then the last one is amending under, is infrastructure and utilities. We actually, as staff, since this was all put together last fall, have decided we don't want to change the underlining, we want to leave it as is. Develop implement requirements for groundwater impact analyses. So strike that last one.
Okay, all right.
And that one, as we can go forth with the watershed assessments, may change. But for now, we want to leave that one as is. Again, I have, I'd already had this and presented it, so I didn't want to change it again today.
When did you say you presented this before, and to who?
No, I already had this, put together this PowerPoint and put it on the agenda.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Next one is going to Chapter 4. So in the plan itself, the strategic plan for conservation used to be a part of the plan. That has been removed, that's actually in the appendix with the county's overall strategic plan. And it just kind of felt odd to just be kind of blocked in the plan. And then if you look on page 4-2, throughout the section, Chapter 4, Natural Resources section, you see updates. So it says, current efforts underway include steam bank stabilization. There are no modifications to the language of the goals, what rather we built in updates to be clear about what's happening. So in the plan itself, that is the nature of the change. Are there any questions?
I just need to catch up, I'm sorry, like I said, I'm scrolling through the various three of them, okay. So where did you say were the updates?
So if you look at 4-2.
Yeah.
Right under the very first goal there, it's preserve, protect, restore, enhance the quality of life, or, sorry, quality of Story County's groundwater. Then it says, current efforts underway in like a grayish font.
Okay, so I have. On the implementation matrix itself, encouraging stormwater best management practices for county-approved projects. Now that's on the implementation matrix.
Yeah, I haven't gotten there yet.
All right, got it, okay, so.
I was still on the plan.
All right, okay.
Did you find it?
Was it under strategies? I'm seeing all the objectives here, so am I like not looking at it right?
No, it's right above objective 1.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
I don't even know what page it would be. So that happens in several occurrences in this chapter. And I don't know, in the interest of time, if you want me to go over each of them, it just, it does show the updates.
Now that I know where it's at, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay. So that is it for Chapter 4, again, just the updates and then removing the strategic plan. So those are the changes for that chapter. For the implementation matrix, when we bring it back to you, we're gonna be, staff will be recommending removing the following four items, mapping impaired water bodies, the state does that. So really having as a strategy for Story County to do it. This is part of our watershed, watershed group discussions as well. If the state's already doing it, it really doesn't make sense to have in our plan. Developing water quality at watershed level outreach and education toolkit. This is actually part of the implementation matrix for the watershed piece, so take out the, this chapter. Inventory map existing below surface resources and explore implement strategies for their protection. And then lastly, removing, reviewing, considering complete street designs as appropriate to Story County. This last one, I had a conversation with Jerry this morning. They did leave this in the Planning and Development Work Program.
Okay.
So at this point, we want to match the work program that has been adopted by the Board. So that one, when you see the implementation matrix, will still be in there. When I get to the transportation section, I'll highlight some of the problems that might be with that, though. But for now, those are the three items in this chapter. Any questions? Okay, going on to land use. The change in the plan actually happens on page 5-4. And again, it's under, it's under land use goal number 5. It's just an update, language update, but the page was reorganized too, to add that update to accomplish a space.
And I'd like to, once again, please let me catch up on this as I'm shifting through all of these. Cause as I made my adjustments, thinking we were doing everything at one time in my comments, so.
I have a little sticky tab, so I can easily just go to it here.
Right, okay, thank you, I'll cut it.
So what you're saying is, what you changed is just including the current efforts language in there?
And then reorganize the page, so, okay. I can do this. I forget we have access to this. So up on the screen, you'll see it, it just is adding this current efforts right here, and as I said, reorganizing the page. And then in the implementation matrix, adding that we've done the review of the area between Ames and Gilbert. It's not the Ames Urban Fringe Plan, it's Ames Urban Fringe Plan. And identifying those next steps, so that review's been done and the next steps have been identified and it's available. But I think there's dialogue that still needs to occur, so adding that under that last, in the implementation matrix.
Wouldn't, isn't this the place, though, where, okay, so, complete review, but also we want to add as one of our goals here, I would think at least, begin negotiating for the Urban Fringe Plan, negotiating extension of the Urban Fringe Plan.
You should say extension as well as modifications because it does expire next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good point.
So I bring that forward, I will, I will get that language, and it won't be a fridge plan. Okay, going on now to the Economic Prosperity chapter. And it's page 6.3 is the next change.
Linda, I have it as page 135 on my iPad, if you're going by iPad.
And I actually have that up here, too.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, I can just go to that page then.
All right.
So the change is this table or this chart right here. The previous version, you did not see the stratification, it just was very condensed. As I said, some of these are very minor changes that we took the opportunity to get done.
Okay, let's go to EP-3, I'm sorry. As I, as I move back and forth here, so you, once again, you said that's five, under 5-what? Or 6?
6-3.
That's why I'm lost.
Or page 137 in the PDF.
Okay, thank you.
The next change occurs on page 6-5, and, sorry, and that's up there on the screen. We had the new laborshed study released. And so we incorporated those dates and some of those numbers and some of the maps of that new laborshed study. So this will be a typical change that we make, just like in two years when we have a new census, we'll go through and modify those. So that's a change to 6.5 and 6.6.
So as I'm looking and I'm going through the, your presentation of the first 24 pages, I'm just looking at implementation matrix stuff, it doesn't give these other changes.
Right, that's why I'm going through this right now.
Okay, all right. I guess I'm gonna have to go back and re-listen to this afterwards to actually go find all it, since they aren't marked in the documents themselves.
So you're saying you would have liked to have seen it like get readed out or something?
Well, yes, highlighted, like the implementation matrix is all marked. So, so, yeah, and that's why I realize I've just gotten lost, or what it is, is that, yes, this is, is not probably as conducive to one time through, just keep going, though. I'll try to comment when I can, but I'm not gonna probably vote to approve anything today or even until I can give feedback.
Page 6.7. We removed, there was a, right before this key geographic areas for growth section, there was language regarding DuPont and Lincoln Way Energy that was very outdated, especially since DuPont no longer is ownership of that land between Ames and Nevada. So we removed that, just to make sure it was consistent with what was actually occurring. And then the next page, the aim, area between Ames and Nevada, added language right here addressing the annexation. It was not in there because it had not occurred yet between Ames and Nevada by the City of Ames. And then the next page, this is all the language regarding the urban renewal area. We updated it current as of September 2018 and added the map, the map was never in there. So all the projects that were approved in 2018 are then on the next page. Any questions so far? And then on page 6.11, updated some of the program language for Homebase Iowa, that now having over 150 businesses, I think it originally said 70-some, updated that number. And then this page on Story County Economic Development Group is all new, that was never in there. We thought it was important as that was an economic development effort of Story County to at least have that in here. And then in the strategies themselves, I'm sorry, the goals. If you look at Economic Prosperity Goal Number 3, and under Objective EP 3.1, there was a strategy bullet number 2, we added model stormwater ordinances. So communicate community standards as they are developed. And there were some examples for streamways, water quality, because the watershed assessments gave us some model stormwater ordinances, we added that to it.
But now in your, oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna go then to the first 24 pages.
I'm going back there right now.
All right, go to Economic Prosperity, it would be slide 20 of 25? Go another one, there we go, okay. But, so you've just commented on EP-3 and you says, remove from both plan and matrix. So now you've said, but we're gonna add something to one of the strategy to down below. And the reason I caught it here, Economic Prosperity Goal, you're recommending we get rid of it in the plan.
No, actually, that's not, it's not supposed to be that.
But that's what it says here.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know what that.
Good, cause I was gonna say, I would strongly urge that we keep that in, that we balance our need for preserving our natural resources, et cetera, and the impact on the environment with development, so, yeah. Okay, so instead then, you're gonna go ahead and add in, all right, now just.
Add in just model stormwater ordinances.
All right.
But we do recommend in the implementation strategies, removing the, considering the development solar farm regulations, that's done, it's on the books, it's adopted as part of our code of ordinances. I had direction from a previous Board to remove the minimum wage in Story County strategy. I had direction from a previous board to remove the minimum wage in Story County strategy. Again, that's why I'm here, before you, to get some direction. And then, developing and distributing a business development toolkit, that is over and done, as well.
Well, I agree, I mean, review minimum wage in Story County, obviously, the legislature voted to take that away from home rule. So, yeah, that seems to take it out of there, it's fine, yeah. Um, okay. Never mind, my um was just a thought, in my mind.
I'm trying to figure out with that EP3, why that was in there.
I don't know, but thank you, 'cause that, that helps clarify, thank you.
Any other questions on Chapter Six? Chapter Seven is our transportation chapter. In the plan itself. The changes are to Goal One. Which is on page 7.2, 7-2. Under Objective One. Under Goal One, Objective T1.1, there's a phrase at the end, within funding frameworks. Is what we're proposing to add.
I think it's page 153, Laura.
Thanks.
Yes. I'll try to remember to do that. So, under Transportation Goal One, Objective One, just simply adding at the end of that, objective within funding frameworks. And then, the next page. There, what used to be, actually, sorry, this next page. Page 155, under Objective T1.4. The strategies, there used to be language regarding development of a master transportation plan, that is removed as a strategy. You'll see it removed out of the implementation matrix. And I said when we, I talked about the complete streets, and being the Planning and Development Work Program. There's some relationship, some nexus between those two elements. So, at this point, staff is suggesting go ahead and remove the master transportation plan, because that was some early discussion by previous board, to take it out, but then, leave the complete streets in. I think they can do the research on the complete streets, and get an idea of what that may necessitate, and that may be bringing a master transportation plan back onto the table for discussion. Any questions? Next change, I, we added, updated maps for the average daily traffic count. We added 2015 maps. I do wanna say, the PDF, when it converted from InDesign, lost the functionality of some of the maps, the images. That, they work in InDesign, so there's some, some glitch that I had to figure out before we actually go to publish. And then, on page 166.
Thank you.
We, there were, there were numbers of ADT, average daily traffic counts in there. They referenced the 2011 figures, I believe, we just referenced the 2015 figures, because the map was on there previously.
When will those next figures be available?
Is it every three years?
I don't know.
Three or four years?
Eleven to 2015 is four years, but I'm just thinking here, then, you know, shouldn't they be available this year?
Well, when we did in 2016, we didn't have the 2015 map yet.
Okay.
So, I think there's always a delay in.
A delay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think it's based on when the data was collected, there's a date, but release is usually later. And then, back towards the end of this entire section, we had references to the strategic plan. Those were removed, and just simply referencing the five-year master, or five-year transportation plan, or five-year construction, road construction program. Because, again, the strategic plan is back in the appendix. Just put them all in one spot. Any question?
I do, on the transportation. When the plan was originally done back in 2016, was there discussion about the Highway 30 situation here in Nevada? Was that considered being included in the plan?
Yes, and we, what, how we've addressed that is.
Well, 'cause I saw that map, which is part of what it.
There's language on this, it's right here, along US, US 30, the Iowa DOT is developing designs for US 30 and 580th Avenue interchange.
Okay.
Because, now, we know that that's where they're working.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then, on the matrix itself, the only change is removing the master transportation plan. Again, that will be brought before you. And then, to the plan, adding the strategic plan documents, as an additional appendancy, and the watershed assessment. Which is really what makes the plan very lengthy, but again, when it's online, they're segmented by chapters. So, I don't know if anyone actually ever prints out the entire thing, we'll put a disclaimer that you will be going through a ream of paper, basically, if you print this entire thing out. But, the watershed assessment was always intended to be added to this as a supplement, as an appendix. And then, to the matrix, adding the watershed assessment, matrix, too, that was approved by the board earlier this year.
Leanne, just a processing question, when this is online, or whatever, would you be able to click on, like, like, the table of contents, and say you want Chapter Three, that'll take you straight to Chapter Three, or will you have to scroll through?
So, originally, it was set up that way, and then, some of the links were broken, yes, I can get that accomplished. That's the ultimate goal, to make it as easy to navigate online as possible.
So, okay, yeah, I was just wondering if that was within your planning, thank you.
Which is why there will be a delay in getting this online, too.
Sure, sure, sure.
So, again, those are the, oop, those are the changes. To the plan. The plan itself are pretty minor. The matrix is where, and that's kind of the beef of the plan, that's the strategies that we go forward. One strategy that I think would be worthwhile adding, and considering is strategy to check in annually with cities about their future growth plans. And adding that to the work program for various departments, just because that is a key component in the plan itself, the land use framework. And then, at some point, this board discussing the viability, rather than having both a strategic plan and the implementation matrix, is there any rationale to only having one? Because it does get somewhat confusing.
Okay, I think you jumped us ahead here, a little bit, so, I'd like to go back to your first suggestion about checking in with the communities every year, so you want to add that to the plan?
To the matrix.
To the matrix, so we are discussing the matrix today, 'cause I got a lot of notes on the matrix.
Well, I'm just saying that, when I bring it back for draft, that'll be something you see in, in the matrix.
So, the, so, what I really saw as far, what we really saw as far as the final matrix, is not really what you want us to comment on.
And the matrix will be coming back to the board in a few weeks. Today's action is the plan itself.
But, we wouldn't, in the plan, talk about checking in with the communities?
It does.
Thank you, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Yep, it does.
So. I, I'm just gonna say, I can't, I, I don't feel I can give good feedback today on this. The plan, I thought I was, when looking at the first presentation, I was actually looking at what the changes were. I'm gonna have to go back and listen to the audio.
Okay.
Okay. And, so I'm sorry. I, I didn't quite understand.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would just have to say, is, I, honestly, 585 pages, I have not read all of it yet.
Yeah. It's okay.
Yeah.
I think I might be the only one in the room that has.
Well, actually, I've read it, I have read it. I, I was using your first 24 pages, thinking that is what we would be able to more interrelate the three, okay, especially when you sent us the final implementation matrix tricks, which is now not, that's gonna be separate. So, so, part of what I'm gonna do, as I go through and listen to the audio again, is I'm gonna actually use my highlighter and, to go in and, and mark where these changes, proposed changes are also on that, so. I don't suppose you have a copy for you, that you've done, that actually has these changes in there, that you could send out to us?
No, I have my handwritten copy, because we did not have the InDesign documents at the time that we were preparing this, we were working on just PDF versions. I now have the InDesign documents.
Okay.
From the consultant.
Are these, of the PDF documents, can you get your Adobe Design, Pro Design, Pro Adobe to, to do the edits on this?
Probably.
Okay, so that.
It'll change the formatting all around.
Pardon?
It'll probably change the formatting all around.
I'm just, for me, at least, then it, yeah, it will be helpful, that's what I'm gonna be doing, though, and if I'm gonna go in and use my Pro Design program to do that and stuff, so. But if you didn't do it, then. All right, okay. It's gonna take me a week or two, with, with, a week, let's say, on this one, to go back.
I'm confused, do you think you can go back and listen to the videotape, and, and from, and from the, or the audio? And get everything you need from that, or are you asking Leanne for something else?
I'm not asking Leanne for something else, I was just asking about poss, formats available. So, and there is actually a PDF, there's PDF, I'll edit off of the PDFs, for me, personally. Okay, all right, thank you. I'm not asking Leanne for anything more from that document, just to receive.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So, just so I'm clear, since I'm new, you guys have been on a little bit longer, so with this, then there's the matrix that goes along with this. And so, it would show your strategies or implementation, just so that I am clear, as I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, as I did go through the, what I'd seen, I thought was the implementation matrix here. And you talked about some of these to remove, or whatever, all right. You're gonna bring that back to us fresh, with your other changes on it.
Other than a couple I mentioned today, what you see is what staff is gonna be presenting as proposed changes.
Why did you not include those couple?
Because we wanted you to act on the plan first, and get some direction on the plan. So that we could bring it back as a whole, as an implementation piece next.
Okay.
That's just standard planning, what, kinda taught to do, do the plan first, and the implementation piece next. But I wanted you to, they do, they cannot be separate.
Right.
They can for action, but if you modify something, take something out of the implementation matrix, and it's a strategy in the plan, it needs to come out of the plan, too.
Correct.
So, I think that's why I presented them together. And if that's proposed to be taken out of the implementation matrix, if it's done or something, it likely is out of the plan, or it just, it can stay in the plan, it's not gonna hurt anything.
And that's more how I went through to compare stuff, all right, so. I'm just trying, in my mind, to figure out how we do this, and, and meet the goals, about what you want, and still know that, feel comfort, for me, to feel comfortable about what we're actually voting on, and what we're voting on any changes for. And, so, I did go through the implementation matrix, obviously, I used it in your presentation as my guide.
Yeah.
On that, so, but you don't want our comments about this, about those, at this time?
That's up to, if you wanna give me, if there's direction that you think staff could use to draft any changes you see in the implementation matrix that are based on proposed changes to a plan, that would be fantastic, because that will help our discussion next time. It's not an easy.
Right, right.
To go through, page by page, with this document, and fortunately, the changes are not really, in the plan itself, enormous.
It's more the implementation, where are we gonna do this?
The implementation matrix is where you see the changes.
Okay. I do, on the implementation, have a, just a couple of overall comments here to start with. I spotted some of the actual actions here that seem to be, we should at least identify them as being with the watershed implementation group, or decision, you know, that, that seemed to be tied more to the watershed implementation group for, to flush out before they come to the Board of Supervisors. It's mentioned in a couple different areas about the quadrant meetings, and obviously, we aren't having those quadrant meetings anymore. You know, some of the things, like, Lisa, we already did the Lisa, you know, evaluation, we got the presentation earlier this year, and we approved continuing to use it. I think that we probably wanna go through and take a look here, a couple of the funding sort, you know, a couple of the estimate of costs, I think, need to be updated. And maybe how we rate some of them as immediates, et cetera, and if they move up into, do we want them to be, instead, more long-term, et cetera? So, I, I did make those kind of notes on there, but that. And I, you're right, it ties back to the plan here, I got a couple of question marks for what, maybe a couple about, why do we wanna get them removed, so. So, you wanna just leave it alone, though, for right now?
Why don't we, here's a suggestion. Maybe if we individually have suggestions, we get them to you, Leanne, rather than going through, taking meeting time to go through everybody's suggestions. Some of these I'm seeing as being rather minor.
Right.
You know, if there's something that, in land, I'm really gonna, you know, we, we can go through them all. You can put them all in the document, and then we can just go through it one time, rather than go through all of the suggestions, and then have another meeting, and go through the whole matrix. And if it's something that, you know, you know, and maybe there's some things that we won't all agree on, but then we'll talk about them when we go through it. Rather than, rather than go over the same territory three or four times, let's try to just do it once.
Sounds good.
Can I actually color code it, based on?
Sure.
Yeah.
And, and the implementation matrix is.
I'll take violet.
Violet.
Color code, I'll take violet. Excuse me. That's okay? Is that okay with you, Lisa?
That's fine, so, when would you look at be, bringing it back for us to review? I mean, would you look at more like the 20th or 27th of August? I just, for me.
Right.
I know you'd be accommodating me, but it'd be kinda hard to go over a phone next weekend, and not be privy to the following.
This would not, this would not be anything to do over the phone.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was not, I was looking at, actually, August 27th, to bring the implementation matrix back. For discussion, because, again, I, I wanted the plan piece first, so that I knew how to craft the implementation matrix, but have some guidance on, no, don't, don't remove that out of the matrix, so, leave it in the plan, too.
Let's look at August 27th.
So, is that August 27th for the matrix, is that for some, I know that Laura's just mentioned, she wanted to go over more, and I'm just being quite honest, I haven't read it all yet. 585 pages is a lot to go through, so, are you looking at bringing that back next week, or are you also waiting to bring that back towards the end of the month as well?
Towards the end of the month.
I would say we should keep our, our agenda fairly simple for next week, because it is really difficult to follow through, even if you're, even if you're on the website.
Sure, sure.
It's just difficult to do it by phone. I'm looking at a simple meeting, hopefully.
Okay, okay.
I just know one agenda item.
Okay, does that work?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Anything else, or should we head on down the agenda? No departmental reports, under other reports?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Under other reports, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Nope.
Leanne, again, on the mitigation strategies.
I just closed out of the computer, sorry. So, the item that is before you right now, in early May, the Board of Supervisors approved the Multi-Jurisdictional, Multi-Hazard Migation Plan. And that had a number of strategies in it for Story. for Story County to consider. There are several, there are ongoing current strategies, and then there are so, several that are new strategies. I timed them with the discussion of the C2C because a lot of the strategies in the plan, the hazard mitigation plan, are from the C2C plan as well. And that was a concerted effort that Story County did when we started the discussion of mitigation strategies. So, quickly up on the screen, the ones that are continue and in progress, those have been assigned to a department already, or an office. Assigned might not be appropriate, but they're, they're built into someone's work program. For example, enrollment support and NFIP community rating system program for unincorporated areas. We're a CRS community, I manage that program, so that's ongoing. Starting with item number 13, Story 13, there were several new hazard mitigation strategies added. This first one, develop a density-based zoning program, is part of the work program, a planning and development. It's a C2C plan item. And then, page two, there are four more. All these are part of the C2C plan, and they, they are in work programs. We're just, I am here to determine at what level do you want staff to focus attention on them. Like, the first, the Story 14, continue participation in HUD led hazard control program, that grant program has expired. They will be doing the notice of interest, I think, relatively soon, but that's not on anyone's plate to be doing. It has not been added to a work program. It's just simply in the hazard mitigation plan. So, is it, even though it's a new action item, as of 2019 adoption of plan, do you want staff to be adding that to a work program now, or do you want it to be, basically lie fallow for a while?
Okay, when you talk about staff, who are you talking to? I mean, the Story 14 and 15 are being done by environmental health.
15 is. The HUD, the lead hazard control program that was run through City of Marshalltown, that has ceased.
Okay.
That program has ceased.
So, you want us to tell you, one of the things you're asking for us to do is say who to farm it out to?
Yeah. That was a discussion that never occurred at this table, at the board table when the plan was adopted.
Okay, so, environmental health has the other lead program. It would seem environmental health would have that, but I feel uncomfortable saying, assign it to environmental health without environmental health being here, without Margaret James being here, as an example.
Okay.
So, and I also marked on page one, I'm unclear about who's really doing some of what we already have approved, one through 12, and where that is in the process. So I made those notes, and that would be something probably I wouldn't expect from you guys to have necessarily done, but having been through this and attended those workshops and et cetera. So, so I have more questions on that, but that's one of them, is who's doing this?
Okay.
And where are we? And certainly I made some notations about some of the high, medium, and low rankings about why, how we've assigned them in the mitigation plan, but they don't correspond to where they are as far as the work plans of departments who do have them.
Let me answer that first. The priority that's in the mitigation plan is based on the state league criteria worksheets that the planning team members used. It comes up with a number, and that's how that is assigned. That was not a discussion and decision point of the board necessarily. It was what the worksheet said it to be.
Okay, super. And I remember the worksheets, 'cause as I said, I went through a participant program.
Yeah, they're fun worksheets.
Right. So, so I see part of what we do is we go through this. Also, there's a couple here that we have ranked through those mitigate, through the worksheets as high, but we have not actually done anything when given the opportunity to, to meet them. And that would be like Story number five, promote and construct tornado safe rooms on county-owned properties. I see Todd left, get back in the room, but if, earlier this year, we approved the design for the Hickory Grove Beach House, and that was approved without it being, having a tornado safe room or built to tornado safe standards. Todd brought it up, and then after the meeting, Todd came and talked to me. I then checked in with my Cox, and I think I mentioned it to, to Linda at the same time, and there was some discussion about, well, they really don't work, et cetera. But here we have a goal that's rated as a high priority, that we will make sure we have county-owned properties with safe rooms. We've built a new facility, even though it's a shower room or you will the beach house, it's a, and yet we didn't do that. So I'm wondering, do we just leave it as the H, because it was an H that, on the box that we checked for our plan, but we're not doing our plan? So, but, okay. Alright.
On this first page, what were the other ones you had questions on?
Sure, so, increase in support and public education and awareness. So are you, is outreach taking the lead on this, or is emergency management taking the lead?
It's mostly emergency management guiding it.
Okay.
And then, just like, we are in the process of translating some of the documents through my end of things.
Okay.
It's a, it's a concerted effort. Honestly, this strategy has been on, in the hazard mitigation plan for, I think, since 2003.
Okay, thanks. So the next one, development and implementation of a COOP COG plan. We are continuing in progress on this one, since we do have Supervisor Hens now as brand-new, and then Supervisor Merkin at the beginning of the year participated in one part of, of ongoing. But I'd like to see that this move ahead, and we, I know we haven't meeting with the strategy, but as far as a staff priority, I've already brought up here before about we, we had discussed about, we have some legal powers that we need to have, enact, right? We need to work with legal, et cetera, on that, and that was deferred, that was given to you after Deb Schildroff left, right?
So, this, by this Friday, actually, hopefully by Thursday, the draft updates to COOP COG will be out to elected officials and department heads. I think it's on the 20th of August. It's either the 20th or the 27th that's scheduled to come before the board for consideration.
Okay, great. Okay, super, 'cause that was my next question. And then I did go and look at, 'cause I think this is so important, at our fiscal year 20 budget, and I didn't find any money in for the emergency supplies, I call it, or the drive-away kits. I didn't find any in our budget, but you had asked for some, hadn't you?
There's, I don't think there's any in there.
That was taken out, right?
What are you talking about?
It's not, it's related to the COOP COG.
It's related to the COOP COG plan. I'm just taking a look here about what this, you know, what exactly, we say it's continue in progress, but I hadn't heard about where we were progressing. And one of them was that the next, a next key step that was identified, has been identified for over a year, has been that in the event that we would have to enact the COOP COG plan, there would be departments who would have to move stuff, literally, and they're called drive-away kits, okay, or emergen-, you know, and that is it time that we fund those for the departments. Or, the board has to have the conversation, okay, about, does, do the departments have to fund those themselves? So, so I'm just, I mean, if, if we're being asked to approve this, to me, it's like, let's talk about what we're being asked to approve.
So these have all been approved by the board?
This is adopted. This is in the plan.
And the new ones, so I'm asking, we have to base on these?
This is in the plan we approved back in.
Yeah, so the updates on these are, okay, so those are questions. Alright, so then, let's see, the next one, I have a question on the indoor warning systems. How are we doing? I know that's Linda, that's now you, the indoor warning systems be required on all county buildings with public access. Now, in this, that's, I think, related to Todd, I'm sorry, Todd left for the tornadoes.
I think my understanding, there's a paging system discussion going on at the Justice Center. I think there's, there are momentum moving.
Right.
And maybe that's something, if it's the board's preference for each of these items, I can get an update, for, because these are items that, because they're in progress, I know to whom I can go to. I just wanna make sure, like, especially that HUD-led hazard grant program, if we wanna apply for that, again, someone's watching out for that, using that as an example.
Right.
But I can get updates on all these items beyond what I know.
Okay, and so, yes, so that was back to my question, who's responsible for what here? The conversation that's going on at the Justice Center, I know, is kinda moving forward. I know that because of the tornado, et cetera, here, there's been, you know, we've gotten the paging system fixed. There's still not one in Human Services. So is the Safety Committee over that at what?
The paging system, I think, refers not to a phone system, because if an internet's down, phones are down.
Right.
Paging system, I believe, refers to some other system besides what we, how you can page through our phone system, in case there's some kind of a power outage or internet outage. That is what they're talking about, I believe, for the Justice Center now. I have had some discussion after the last tornado drill. I was asking some questions in the fire drill, asking some questions, and we said, yes, that's something we need to look at eventually at the admin building, but let's get the Justice Center working first.
Okay.
It's probably, it's probably, and it's just discussions.
So.
That I've had with Todd and with Joey because of some issues that we brought up after having some drills, which is why you have drills, 'cause then you think about those things.
So, if we wanted to assign to someone, would Todd, Todd would be probably the person then if we did that, or the Safety Committee?
I don't think that we need to, at this table right here, getting, get into assigning specific tasks to specific staff, 'cause then I think we're gonna be here 80 hours a week doing that. I think we rely on our, you know, right now, we don't have a Director of Internal Operations, but I think we need to rely on those staff to assign duties. I don't think we do that from this table.
And the reason I ask that is that in this particular instance, how many years has the Safety Committee been discussing this? So I just, you know, I'm just, that's, yeah.
Let me, yeah. I, I think that when, and also, I'm gonna remind you that we are short-staffed right now, so I think discussions will continue, people will continue working on some of these things, but I don't think we, at this point, should be assigning additional work to staff.
Okay, so.
I know just, there's a lot that's going on right now.
So remind me again, you want us to do what with this?
Be able to, it's gonna be kinda contrary to what Linda just said, that, but first, a couple of these, at least be able to identify that this, we need to be keeping aware of it. So all these ones are continuing in progress. At some level, something's happening on it, or it had been up till the point that the Planning Committee was meeting on it. On the new ones, there are some in the work program, but there's definitely one that the grant is no longer around, or is it still a priority? Do we still need to be watching for that, and at what level does that occur?
So, let me try to summarize. Everything on this first page is already existing, it's in somebody's work plan.
Except for, yes.
Except for what?
13 is in the work, work program too. I thought you were saying already in progress. 13 is a new one, but it's in Planning and Development's work program.
Okay. So you're simply saying, we need to just, not necessarily say this is the, you know, just say, where should something fit? Are you still, are you saying you want us to do that today?
Can I ask a clarifying question on it?
Please do.
So, as I'm looking at the two sheets here, so, when you say some are already being, somebody's already doing that work, or it's fit into their job description, do I know what department that it's in? That's, that's where, I guess I'm kind of lost here.
No, because they didn't go to that level of detail in the mitigation plan, because this is a multi-jurisdictional, so all the jurisdictions, if you continue down on it, it goes all the way down to zeroing.
LeAnn, what if you just took a paper cut? I don't wanna have another matrix. I don't want one more, you know, but you could just take paper copy of this and write on it. Who's got it? What work plan it's in? 'Cause I know this is already bound, you're just, you just took pages from that.
Right.
And it's not something necessarily, you can add columns to or whatever. Can you just make a copy, write on it, who's, who's work plan it's in, and what department's responsible for it?
At least at this time.
At this time, and then just give that to us.
And, keep really, the discussion today is, if you want to assign the ones that aren't assigned or not. I mean, it's your plan, right?
Then let me go back to what I said. Everything on the first page is assigned.
Yes.
I have a question after 30 years.
Well then, let's let LeAnn give us the information in written form.
It sounds great.
Just by writing it on this, okay? So let's go to the second page. I have a 130 that I cannot be there to.
I know, I know.
So let's keep moving if we cannot. LeAnn? Let me just, just do a yes or no, and let's get through it.
Yeah.
Is 14 assigned?
No.
Is 15?
Yes.
To whom?
Health Department.
Okay, is 16 assigned?
Yes, County Outreach and Special Project Manager.
Okay, you. 17?
County Outreach and Special Project Manager.
Okay. And then names one and two?
Those are not ours.
So the only thing we're looking at is 14. Did I cut through something here? Do we, can we just do that?
And, again, today, the benefit for today is to make sure that the board's aware of the strategies that have been adopted.
Right. I would like to revisit at some future date, the assignment of number 16. I'd like a better explanation about what it's doing, 'cause it seems like that the hazards address, the hazards materials and transportation. I know that as I go to the local emergency preparedness committees, uh, planning committee, these are the types of things that are being discussed down there, which would seem to be in an emergency management, I mean, emergency management staff organize that meeting, et cetera. So I'm trying to figure out exactly what this means, but if you'd like to move on for today, that's okay. Just, but some of these, I think, need to come back and be reviewed.
So, and also, if I heard you, LeAnn, you're wondering, wanting to get some direction on Story 14.
Right.
Of whether we wanna have that continue as a priority, because the grant has ended. But it sounds like you may be applying for the new grant, or no?
That's what I'm getting, I want, the, the board needs to give direction that we do need to be watching out for that notice of interest to come out and then go through that.
So you're wanting to say, do, do we want you, do we, is it a priority not that we wanna tell you, yes, keep it, keep your eye out for that notice of interest?
And to whom?
So that you can apply for it again?
But yeah, I think, I think we need to get feedback from Environmental Health. Margaret James needs to talk about this. Was she?
Well, and yes, when, when these were all put together, they, I questioned Margaret James, see if these were indeed items to keep on as a mitigation strategy, or to add as new ones to mitigation.
And she said, add, right, so, okay. So, so I still would like to have Margaret affirm that she's interested in taking this and applying for the grant.
Should we go to the Board of Health and ask?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking too.
So, would you follow up on that, and would you ask for Margaret and the board's input on whether they want to take that on? Okay, thank you. And I'm not meaning to, to cut you shortly, LeAnn, I'm just trying to figure out what we need to do today to help you move forward.
Today was meant to be very, make you aware of, two of you were on the board when the plan was adopted, but it was consent. It's a very lengthy plan too, to make sure that you're aware of the strategies and that we, we're, we're keeping them, we have the strategic plan up here on the wall. These are, these are important, and making sure that.
Right.
They need, if they need to be assigned, they're assigned.
Right.
So then you will do what I asked, you just take a hard copy, write on here, who's assigned, who's, who's work plan it's in, and who's assigned to do it, and then get it to the three of us, so we have that information?
Yep, I will do that.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, that would just be helpful for me too.
That's good for me.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this?
Not for me.
Okay. LeAnn, thank you for all the information.
You are welcome.
Okay. Down to upcoming agenda items, does anybody have anything that we need for sure on the agenda for next Tuesday?
No.
Okay, then.
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Whatever comes up, and we'll try to keep it a... Whatever comes up, and we'll try to keep it a short, easy agenda to deal with, get the essentials, and not much else. You'll be headed out, right?
Yes.
Okay. Public forum number two, any members of the public? Hi, Dustin, anything to say for it?
I think we have about 30 minutes or so.
I don't see a public forum anywhere on the agenda, I'm sorry.
I do want to chat with you for a second after, thanks.
Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors, anything that you need to share right now?
Well, I would like to talk about something that LeAnn had forwarded, and I think she forwarded it to the, all three of us, and it was the possibility of trying to compete to participate in an ACO learning grant, a cohort, strategy for the next year, about affordable housing, and I guess, I had, I had planned on coming in here saying that there'd be, it'd be a tight turnaround in eight days to apply for it, but I might be interested in seeing if we could pull it together. I think after today, and kind of some of the discussion we've had today, that I think that as much as I'd like to see Story County be able to be able to participate in this, and how much could be learned through this learning community in the next year on housing, I don't think the timing's right, especially with only an eight-day turnaround on it, so...
I think that's good analysis, thank you.
So that shortened it quite a bit, how's that?
Okay, and Lisa, did you have anything else on that?
No, I don't.
Okay. Yeah, it, you know, different times, more lead time, I think it could have been something interesting to look at, but no, I, particularly when it's really looking at, meeting team members from outside, community-wide, that's about a month-long thing to get together, as far as I'm concerned, so, okay. Lisa, did you have anything?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Hens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, we are adjourned.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.